Good evening. Is this on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, February 21st, 2019. This is the Select Committee on Citywide Mandatory Housing Affordability, and this meeting will now come to order. It is 5:32 PM. I am Lorena Gonzalez, Vice Chair of the Select Committee on Citywide Mandatory Housing Affordability, and I am joined this evening by Councilmembers Sawat and Juarez. Thank you so much for being here. And I know that there are others who are intending to join us. A quick note: Councilmember Johnson, who is the Chair of this committee, is unfortunately unable to be with us as he's on vacation with his family, and he is fulfilling a... Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm going to run a tight ship here. I am not going to tolerate any heckling. Understood? Here's... There are people on this city council who deserve an opportunity to spend time with their family, and that will be respected. So Councilmember Johnson is unfortunately not able to chair this committee, even though he has chaired every other single committee that this Select Committee has had. Councilmember O'Brien and Harold are also not able to join us, and Councilmember Bagshaw will be arriving later this evening. It's my understanding that Councilmember Mosqueta may join us for a little bit this morning. She's feeling under the weather and may have to leave us earlier than she'd like to. I know that everybody's staff is watching this meeting. It's been streamed live on the Seattle Channel. Councilmembers are going to be able to watch this video once it uploads onto the seattlechannel.org website, and I know and trust that they will be watching. Okay, Chairs' Report. This is the 19th meeting of the Select Committee on Citywide Mandatory Housing Affordability and the sixth evening public hearing we have held on this proposal. Since MHA was first unveiled as a recommendation in 2015, the city has canvassed 10,000 urban village households and has held more than 200 meetings to hear from community members about mandatory housing affordability legislation. This includes more than 40 council-led public meetings, open houses throughout the city, and 16 urban village community design workshops. The impacts of this proposal were analyzed in draft and final environmental impact statements. After a year-long appeal that delayed deliberation on this legislation, the environmental impact study was upheld by an independent hearing examiner. The city of Seattle has conducted additional analysis of potential impacts to historic resources and released that work two weeks ago. In 2018, the Select Committee on Citywide MHA met 14 times with opportunities for public comment at each meeting and hosted five evening public hearings throughout the city. An additional six Select Committee meetings were scheduled for this year to discuss amendments resulting from this extensive engagement process. After tonight's final public hearing, the Select Committee will reconvene on Monday, February 25th, after the city council meeting, to vote on the citywide mandatory housing affordability legislation and on any amendments that have been sponsored by councilmembers. A vote of the full city council is expected to occur on March 18th, 2019, at its regularly scheduled 2:00 PM meeting. Before we start this public hearing, there's a few things that I've been asked to inform the audience about. Before I do that, I just want to acknowledge that we have a full house today, and I want to thank all of the city council staff and our city hall security and everyone else on the administrative staff who have been absolutely instrumental in making sure that we can welcome members of the public into chambers tonight, and they're all going to be working really late, so I hope you will join me in thanking them for their public service this evening. All right. I'm going to share some information with you all, and before I share this information with you, don't @ me on Twitter. I'm just the messenger. But there has been an extension of parking available at the Sea Park Garage. Again, do not @ me. I am just communicating information to you. The Sea Park Garage, if you chose to drive a vehicle this evening, will remain open until 11:00 PM at the rate of $5 for attendees. And of course, our public transit through King County is always available to us, including myself, because that's how I'll be getting home. Again, we're expecting a large number of speakers tonight. We want to provide everyone here an opportunity to speak. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and begin moving through the process of establishing the protocols for beginning the public hearing. So will our wonderful clerk please read the short titles of Agenda Items 1 through 3?
Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119443, relating to land use amendments in Seattle Comprehensive Plan to Incorporate Changes Related to Mandatory Housing Affordability as Proposed in 2019 Comprehensive Plan Annual Amendment Process. Council Bill 1194444, in ordinance relating to mandatory housing affordability. Council Bill 119445, relating to land use and zoning, amending Chapter 23.32, Seattle Municipal Code. Can we...
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am going to open up the public hearing for comments on these three bills before us. A sign-up sheet was provided and has been available since 5:00 PM. Members of groups, organizations, or coalitions with similar interests are encouraged to combine their testimony. Groups must have four or more people and will be allocated up to five minutes to comment on all three agenda items. We request that those who stand with the group only do so once. Individual comments will be allotted up to two minutes to comment on all three items. I'll be calling three names at a time for you to begin making your way to one of our microphones. And I ask that you begin your comments by stating your name, so that I can make sure that I'm checking folks' names off on the sign-up sheet. For those of you who may not be able to make your way up to one of the two podiums, when I call your name, if you can raise your hand, I believe we have a roving microphone that we can take to you. Again, if you have difficulty with mobility getting up to any of the two microphones, please make sure you let us know by raising your hand, and we'll get a microphone over to you to facilitate your ability to provide us public testimony from your current seat. Those who signed up to speak have been given a card with the number indicating their position on the speaking list. When you come up to speak, please make sure you put your card in the public comment box, or you can just simply leave it on the podium by the microphone where you spoke. There's also a public comment box right over here. I think that's microphone B, where you can drop off written public comment if you didn't have an opportunity to sign up, or if tonight goes too long and you have to leave, or if you just want to share additional comments with the council, you can place your public comment cards in that box right there. Those will be delivered to all councilmembers by the clerk at a later time. So really quickly, just as I read your name, each one of you will have a number, and I'm going to read from a List A and a List B, so listen for your number, but also listen for the letter of A or B. Each of the microphones are designated microphone A and microphone B, and so as I call your name, I would ask that you begin to queue up behind your designated microphone, consistent with the number that was assigned to you, so that we can make sure we're moving this along. I know this is a lot of information. I'll do my best to remind you all as the Chair of tonight's committee about how to file in for your public comments, so we can have a nice, smooth evening. So I believe we are going to be at capacity, or we are close to capacity. We're at capacity, so security. So because chambers are at capacity, we will have an overfill room. That's going to be in the Bertha Knight Landis Room downstairs. Unfortunately, we understand that it was booked until just a few moments ago, and so if you have not been able to enter into council chambers and are wanting to get into the overfill room, that overfill room will be available at approximately 5:45 PM. Security is saying-ish. So hang tight. We promise that we will make sure that we have some room and seats for you to sit in in the Bertha Knight Landis Room as soon as the prior event clears out and we're able to set up that room. So again, appreciate your patience and your cooperation as we try to make sure that we have an efficient meeting where we can hear from all of those folks who have signed up. So, all right. I think I've covered it all. Have I, Madam Clerk? I think so. All right. Woo! Here we go. Okay, we're going to go ahead and dig into the public comment period, and I'm going to go ahead and begin reading folks' names. Again, as a reminder, if you're an individual speaker, you have two minutes of public comment. Groups of four or more are allotted five minutes. If a speaker's comment exceeds the time allotted, a buzzer will remind speakers of their expired time, and their microphone will shut off. When your name is called, please line up at one of the two microphones based on the designation of the letter that I call after your number, and this will help us all manage our time efficiently. Here we go. So I am going to go ahead and call three names, and again, I'm going to be going back and forth between List A and List B. So the first person signed up is Erin Hike, 1A, and the second person is Patience Malava, 1B, followed by Alice Lockhart, 2A.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. For the record, my name is Erin Hike, representing SCIU 925 and the 4,000 members we have in the city of Seattle. Our members here are childcare providers and folks at the UW who serve patients and students, and they didn't get into this work to get rich. They do important work that helps our city function, and for that, they should be able to get a fair paycheck, good healthcare, and a roof over their heads. But because of our ever-increasing rents in the city, they've either already moved out of the city, or they are forced to grapple with that every day. Middle and low-income workers will continue to get priced out of the city if we don't increase our housing stock, and that means upzoning our neighborhoods. We're not making any more land, and so if we want to remain a diverse city, we have to look beyond reliance on single-use properties. You've heard from 925 a few times about how there is a lack of affordable childcare at a crisis state in this city. When you're a childcare provider making $12 an hour, that means you're at the razor edge of being priced out, and the space to be able to be licensed to provide that care is so expensive that most of our members can't afford to do it, and that has a ripple effect on working families who can't find good places for their kids to be when they are out there working and earning the wages that pay their rents. If we don't build more housing and more types of housing, this crisis is only going to get worse, and that's why we're supporting this proposal, and we are also supporting Amendment A15 to create more childcare centers to step up and meet this problem. The MHA is the result of business, labor, nonprofits, developers, and individuals, as well as the folks up here today, and you all compromise to make something that will serve a number of people here and making meaningful impact on our housing crisis. We must all do our part if we want to make this an affordable city, and we support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. We have 1B, Patience, followed by 1A, Alice.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Patience Malava, and I am here on behalf of the Housing Development Consortium and Seattle King County and our Coalition Seattle for Everyone. We support MHA, and we urge you to move fast in adopting the MHA citywide legislation. Four years has been too long for one tool to be worked on and to be put in place. We see MHA right now with the amendments that you're looking at as an opportunity for you to work towards maximizing that we get to the goal of the 63 affordable housing homes that this program can produce, and even more. We're also concerned that these reductions that are being considered and discussed as part of the amendments are really going to reduce the capacity for us to increase more housing options for people near transit, near open spaces, near jobs, and this is where we should be going. We should be going to a place where we're increasing housing for people in those specific areas. As already mentioned, wages have not kept up with the housing cost. Working families are struggling. Lower-income households have felt the impact much more greater. So we're inviting you, as you consider the final legislation, to make it strong and bold for us to be able to meet the affordable housing goals that we are faced with. As you well know, that the increase has been going on for the need for more housing in our community. More people need housing, and this is the opportunity for us to mitigate that need. This is the opportunity for us to mitigate displacement that has been happening. So please pass MHA, and pass MHA fast as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Alice Lockhart, 1... I'm sorry, who is 2A, followed by Nancy Helm, 2B, followed by AP Heard, 3A.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff, and thanks for this opportunity to speak. I'm Alice Lockhart, and this is Nancy Helm. We'll both be speaking for tonight for 350 Seattle's housing team. MHA is so close to the finish line. Thank you for all your work to get us here. As usual, we are here to remind everyone that housing is a climate issue, and every little bit, every single person who can live in the city, close to transit, with one-fourth to one-half the carbon footprint of a life in the suburbs, and every carbon-sequestering tree that isn't cut down to make room for housing in rural areas, every little bit counts. We urge council to vote down the several amendments that increase... I'm sorry, the several amendments in areas with access to transit, high opportunity and low risk of displacement, that increase proposed zoning designations relative to the original MHA map. These amendments would perpetuate Seattle's legacy of racial covenants, redlining, and exclusionary zoning, and hinder the city's ability to create enough low-carbon housing to meet its climate goals. We urge council to support the several amendments that increase proposed zoning designations and thus open up opportunities for more people to live in those same transit-rich and opportunity-rich areas. We also support the Crown Hill zoning changes, which don't overall weaken MHA. They balance amendments increasing height limits against some low-rise RSL changes for a near-net-zero effect on MHA-proposed growth, and they were developed with careful consideration of the needs of the neighborhood areas with the highest displacement risk within Crown Hill, as well as a consultation process that reached out to not only homeowners but also renters. Thank you. Nancy will finish for us.
Thank you. Hello. Hold on, Nancy. I'm going to start calling additional names. Again, as you hear your name, please make sure that you are making your way through from your seat up to the podium. So Nancy Helm will be 2B, followed by AP Heard, 3A, followed by Tim Parham, 3B. Nancy.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Helm, continuing the testimony of Seattle 350. We urge council to vote against Amendment B6, and we support your thoughtful work on the remainder of the consent package, including amendments that increase... that allow increased housing capacity, amendments that increase city livability, amendments motivated by considerations of equity, amendments that improve development standards, amendments that favor increased affordable housing, and amendments that favor energy efficiency and/or green building. Thank you all for your work on MHA, and thanks in advance for bringing it to a strong conclusion by supporting the consent package and voting down amendments that restrict access to Seattle's low-displacement risk and transit- and opportunity-rich neighborhoods. Again, we feel very strongly that the city cannot possibly meet its climate goals without increased housing in transit-rich and opportunity-rich neighborhoods, and we urge passage of MHA promptly.
Thank you. AP Heard, 3A, followed by Tim Parham, 3B, followed by Lisa Kuhn, 4A.
Hi, I'm AP Heard, and I'm speaking in favor of passing MHA now. Sometimes with the passage of time, it can be hard to remember how hard it was to get to a deal. We've been working on getting to the grand bargain since the Nichols administration. I worked on the failed attempt to get to a deal in the McGinn administration. I spent dozens of hours in meetings on it. And then again, in the Murray administration, where we finally got to a deal, the grand bargain. MHA is one of the most critical pieces of this, the critical piece that lets everyone have access to the economic opportunity in Seattle, people who started out here, and new immigrants and regional migrants who all deserve the chance to be here. Please pass MHA with no change to the fee structure and no impact fees that were never part of the grand bargain. Also, I'm supportive of the amendment for the P designation in Crown Hill on 90th Northwest and Mary Avenue Northwest. Thank you again for all your efforts on this. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, I have 3B, Tim Parham. Parham?
I'm speaking on his behalf.
Okay. You don't look like a Tim, but...
Yeah.
You know. Tim Parham, okay, 3B. And what's your name?
Veronica Gunther.
Veronica Gunther. And Veronica, did you sign up at a later time?
So I'm on the Planning Commission, and I'm speaking on his behalf because he's our Chair and he was not able to get in.
Okay, so I will have you go. And then 4A is Lisa Kuhn, and then 4B is Sarah Jane Siegfried. Please.
All right. Thank you for providing an opportunity to comment on the mandatory housing affordability legislation. The council reiterates its strong support for MHA, which is one of the most important tools to help address Seattle's housing crisis. Particularly, the commission remains excited about the possibility for the MHA program to distribute more development capacity to areas with low displacement risk and high access to opportunity. This means more development in areas with existing resources, and if the program is managed true to its intent, then more affordable housing will be available in these neighborhoods through both payment and performance into MHA. This is vital for providing housing choices for those who would otherwise not be able to live in Seattle, and more specifically, in high-cost areas. As stewards of Seattle's Comprehensive Plan, the commission has emphasized the need to align MHA with the goals and policies articulated in that plan. Today, we'd like to call attention to the following proposed council amendments that are inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommendations that the Planning Commission has previously provided to council and staff. One, the sponsored map amendments that were pulled out for individual vote during the February 8th committee meeting are not consistent with several of the housing goals and land use goals from the Comprehensive Plan, such as housing goals 1 through 4 and land use goals 2 through 8. We encourage the council to consider citywide equity implications of amendments that reduce the originally proposed application of MHA. For example, districts 1, 4, and 6 together have 25 amendments reducing the MHA upzones in areas with a low risk of displacement. Additionally, the proposed tax amendment D2 creates a qualifiable trigger for community planning within the Morgan Junction urban village. This would commit OPCD to planning in the Morgan Junction regardless of equity. We do not like this precedent, so we have this table of the rest of our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Lisa Kuhn, who is 4A, followed by Sarah Jane, 4B, followed by 5A, Ruby Holland.
Okay, I'm Lisa Kuhn. I'm speaking to MHA and why my husband and I are leaving Seattle. The bottom line is that the tax structure of the city and the state means that tech bros, venture capitalists, speculators, and developers will continue to pour in and fill block after block after block of ugly boxes, the true reflection of the new Seattle. And I don't think we can stop it, and it won't be fixable in our lifetimes, if ever. We're lucky. My husband and I have had spectacular housing karma, and partway through this, it became clear to us, it was made clear to us, that not only should we leave, but that we have someplace to run to. I worried that we would be looked at as interlopers, but all I had to do was say, "We're being pushed out of Seattle," and they understood, and they welcomed us with open arms. And I worried, because, let's face it, when the tech trash gets bored with strip-mining Seattle, were they going to try to follow us? And then Queens fought back and won. The trash tech people can be stopped. It may be too late for Seattle, but there are places out there that can be saved where everyone has value. So it's time to run. If you possibly can, it's time to leave. Go out, find those places, and protect them, and good luck. And I don't think I have anything else to say to you.
4B is Sarah Jane, followed by 5A, Ruby Holland, followed by 5B, Ira Appelman.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Jane Siegfried. Thank you so much for being here. I believe that... Well, I want to say I'm here in Seattle for the long haul. I've been here for 21 years. I will be here for 20 more. The MHA is fundamentally flawed and in all likelihood violates the SEPA. In case it should be reversed by a judge, we need a strong clawback clause, and I trust that you'll include that in the legislation. It would be a shame to give this away for nothing. I support Councilmember Herbert's anti-displacement proposal, which would require developers to mitigate the impacts resulting from loss of affordable housing in areas the city that are considered both high-risk of displacement and low access to opportunity. In other words, those communities where disproportionate displacement of communities of color and other protected classes are likely to occur. I don't believe that MHA has done anything about displacement thus far, so both one-for-one replacement and an inventory are necessary to manage so that we count what we've got. We can't manage what we don't count. So an inventory of affordable housing of all the rents, please. We also need a plan for preservation of historic residences. We've done nothing about the unreinforced masonry buildings, as you know. Many of these are older affordable buildings, and we need to put that into the plan. It could go in the resolution. That would be great. In terms of the other historic resources, there's nothing in the plan. So we absolutely need in the resolution a commitment to preserving what we have, what is our historic heritage. Beyond that, these detailed issues can only be fixed by neighborhood planning, so I beg you to restore neighborhood planning. Thank you.
Before we go ahead and move on, I just want to make a... The clerk has handed me a note to let me know that the Bertha Knight Landis Room is now open, so if you are waiting for overflow space, Bertha Knight Landis Room is now open, and you are welcome to wait in there while your turn comes up. So next, we have Ruby Holland, 5A, followed by Ira, 5B, followed by Kate Martin, 6A.
Ruby's going to speak for a moment. Ruby Holland. My dad, a war veteran, died when I was three years old. Despite great odds, my mom purchased a home in '63 in Seattle's Redline Central District for her four children. Throughout Seattle, there are families like ours who struggle to purchase the American dream for their families. Now these same families are threatened with displacement because of MHA. If you think we are going to turn over our property to some rich fat cat who wants to own all of Seattle so that some high-income workers who have never struggled a day in their lives are still exploring the world and not yet settled can live in our place, wrong answer not happening. For those of you who would try to force us to sell our property, let me remind you that pigs get rich, hogs get slaughtered. Please don't be a hog. Instead, I request that you amend the MHA to not upzone the 23rd and Jackson Urban Village and create an anti-displacement plan for your residents. Councilmember Sawat, stop the political grandstanding. You save the House Young Seniors while turning a blind eye to the District 3 seniors of color, allowing them to be the sacrificial lambs of the city's housing crisis. It is hypocrisy at its finest. To all the firefighters, nurses, teachers, and cops who are priced out of Seattle, and all the hard-working families with children, college students, and seniors who find yourselves living in the streets and in your cars in Seattle, your income will never be enough for the M- for the MHA developers who will opt out of having affordable units on site. Please support the Mike O'Brien Anti-Displacement Plan and get all of you back in the city and off the streets. Thank you.
Okay, we have 5B is Ira, followed by 6A, Kate Martin, followed by 6B, Maria Batiola, Seattle Beacon Hill Preservation Coalition. 5A.
Ira Appleman.
Sorry, 5B. You're 5B.
Yes, I'm 5B.
Sorry about that.
Ira Appleman, Eastlake Fair Growth. I offer three comments. One, I object to the City Council taking final action on MHA at its March 18th meeting because it's unlawful to take action before the public comment period is ended. Notice published on January 22nd, 2019 by Noah Ahn lists the end of comment period as March 29th, 2019. Regardless of how long the comment period must be by law, it's unlawful now to reduce the comment period since much of the public will likely direct their comments based on the first notice after the City Council has already voted on MHA in the current schedule. Two, I attended and videoed Mayor Murray's livability night out at Mohi on April 19th, 2016. Murray, as mayor, promised that the affordable housing would be inclusionary within new development. Mayor Murray said that MHA would fail if the affordable units weren't inclusionary. The only way to assure that an appropriate number of affordable units will be built and that new Seattle developments are actually for everyone is to require by law that they be inclusionary. Your MHA legislation is exclusionary based on a fee-in lieu because Seattle for Everyone developers don't want moderate-income residents living in their buildings. Three, MHA appears to be the most complicated and convoluted legislation in the history of Seattle. Notice cannot possibly be effective because virtually all Seattleites are unaware on how MHA will affect them. After the City Council has sorted out the current MHA mass, before final passage, the City Council should notice all affected residents and property owners to allow comment on the actual legislation that's being considered. There's plenty of time left this year for effective public involvement, that is for effective democracy. Thank you.
Okay, 6B is Maria's group, followed by 6A, Kate Martin, followed by 7B, Frank Faye. Maria?
Well, we're now here. Good afternoon, and thank you so much for all of the hard work. We're from the Seattle Beacon Hill Historic Preservation Coalition, and I'd like to introduce quickly our members, Jessie McKenna, Amy Kiminishi, Angela Castaneda from Beacon Business Council, Beacon Arts, Betty Jean Williamson, and Marty McKenna, and Devon Hollingsworth, who is a lifelong resident and the legacy piece on here. Please help us preserve our history and the contribution of our residents.
But first, let's honor the Duamish tribe, owners of this sacred land. Let's honor our residents, African-American George Riley, early settler and land developer.
Sumi Kia, Arima Publisher of Hokubey Gigi, or otherwise known as North American Times, and president of Japanese Chamber of Commerce.
Ole Hansen, former Seattle mayor and co-founder of Lake Forest Park, San Clemente, and 29 Palms.
Architect Frederick Unalt pioneered mixed-use housing buildings with apartments in the back and stores in the front.
Beacon Hill has 49 properties eligible for historic landmarking.
Please pass historic mitigation for Beacon Hill. Thank you.
That was the most efficient use of five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we have 6A, Kate Martin, followed by 7B, Frank Faye, followed by 7A, Mary Pat Deleva.
Greetings, council members. I ain't no hollow crack girl. There is no livability or affordability in hollow or MHA. It's a lie. Ed Murray made a deal with the devil, and you guys are shining his trophy. Yuck. The 10 crumbs of pseudo-affordable housing per urban village per year is a joke, and so is the redlining idea that those units get built in some other neighborhood. Even with the last-minute amendments, which smack of gee, I might not get re-elected, so I better throw bone to the voters' tactics. I am a planner, and I know this. We have more than enough growth capacity for the foreseeable future in our existing zoning, including in our single-family neighborhoods, so there is no rush. Better to leave all as is and get busy developing better incentive carrots that actually produce something, and don't only offer incentives like bonus height to those who eat lots of carrots. We need bottom-up neighborhood planning because communities aren't just calculating density. They're the fabric of our lives, the roots of our families, the places we build our business. They're ours, and we trusted you to respect that, but you are not. We have an excess of expensive housing and business space, but the key to the door will not come open for the middle class because the meme that we can build, baby, build our way out of this is false. For us, the reality is that the following factors continue to cause housing and business space costs to skyrocket: upzoning and speculation, low interest rates and cheap capital, higher earnings, booming economies, and proximity to transit, labor shortages, and expensive construction materials, and painfully long processing of permits and tax policy that rewards high housing costs. So why don't you stop smoking the hollow crack, get going on some tasty carrots, and bring us positive changes for the next generation? Thank you.
7B is Frank Faye, followed by 7A, Mary Pat Deleva, followed by 8B, Catherine Holiday. Frank?
Hello, I'm Frank Faye of the Wallingford neighborhood, and we are a neighborhood, not a housing production zone. But that is what is baked in the MHA cake. MHA will demolish existing affordable housing, displace longtime renters, diminish the natural environment, do away with yards and trees and sunlight, disregard historic buildings and neighborhoods, and it does nothing for first-time homebuyers. And on balance, it seems very clear that it does much more harm than good. It may not even produce more affordable housing units than it destroys. When Steve Walker, Director of the Office of Housing, was asked at a meeting how neighbors in the MHA area are to cope, he replied, "The city expects you to move out." This is the new redlining. Current residents are occupying space that wealthy people could be living in. So current residents must give up homes, give up neighborhoods, give up neighbors, give up communities, and get out. The purpose of the City Council is not to serve developer profits, and therefore, the City Council should reject the new redlining of MHA.
All right. We have 7A, Mary Pat Deleva, followed by 8B, Catherine Holiday, followed by 8A, Carolyn Rodenberg.
Hi, my name is Mary Pat Deleva. I live in the central area. MHA is fundamentally flawed. MHA makes false promises. There are proposed amendments that I believe help mitigate some of the damage MHA will cause. If MHA is really going to benefit more than just the developers who crafted it in the first place, it is imperative that the clawback amendment be adopted. I also support amending MHA to guarantee no net loss of affordable and low-income housing. Remove the one-size-fits-all upzone rule that displaces our most diverse neighborhoods by adding flexibility, and leave South Park, which is a diverse, low-income community that doesn't qualify as an urban village alone. MHA needs to acknowledge the importance of our natural environment, which gradually enhances our livability by protecting and restoring our shrinking tree canopy, most of which exists in single-family zones. Acknowledge the lack of MHA planning to evaluate historical resources in every neighborhood. Neighborhood planning volunteers could be used to develop criteria and to prioritize preservation of our local gems, both residential and commercial. Streamline the city's process of evaluating historical resources, as was done for the design review process. The MHA upzones and the suppression of neighborhood voices and planning are the grand bargain gift of Mayor Murray and developers to maximize profits. The result will be massive displacement and gentrification without preservation of any historical resources or older affordable buildings. The small amounts of new subsidized housing do not offset the large and uncounted loss of older, low-market-rate housing. Do the right thing and mitigate the flaws through adoption of the amendments. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have 8B, Catherine Holiday, followed by 8A, Carolyn Rodenberg, followed by 9B, Deb Barker.
I'm Kathy Holiday, District 3. MHA doesn't require affordable housing in the place of development. MHA requires impact fees that are too low. Those who think affordable housing will be produced in abundance need only look at the new units around the city. Can you afford these? MHA, what I want to say is Lisa Herbert's proposed displacement ordinance must not be shifted to the Land Use Committee, but decided as soon as possible in the MHA Select Committee on or before the 25th of this month. It addresses more specifics, such as tenant relocation assistance licenses, the need to track income and displacement risk, and one-for-one replacement within development of demolished affordable housing. Your amendment really does address more specifics that need to be addressed than is in the current MHA legislation. That's all.
Okay, 8A is Carolyn. 9B is Deb Barker, followed by 9A, Cindy Barker.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight. I've heard many people speak already about the need for affordable housing in Seattle. I think affordable housing is a very important thing. We do need to keep people in the city, and we need to welcome new people. But we also need to protect our trees. I am a climate activist, and I care for trees because of my love for them, but I also care for trees because of what they provide. They provide carbon sinks in the city. They provide flood control in the city. They provide a reduction in heat islands in the city. I don't know if you know, but Seattle, I think, is number four. And that may be incorrect. It may be number 10, but it is a really high number in terms of the nation. We have a lot of heat islands already. When you cut down trees, you're going to have more heat islands, and people are going to die because of heat. Yes, we need housing, but we also need to reduce asthma risk and keep our trees. We also need to prevent floods and keep our trees. There are ways to do that. I appreciate Councilmember O'Brien and Johnson's Amendment Number 16, A16, because it deals with trees and tree protections. I appreciate that. I think you may have had something to do with that as well, Lisa. I also appreciate what you've done with the displacement, because if we're going to have affordable housing, then we need to keep people from being displaced. And I believe we need to keep trees from being displaced as well. Thank you.
We have 9B, Deb Barker, followed by 9A, Cindy Barker, followed by 10B, Jacinta Fitzgerald, or Jacinta.
Thank you, council members. You're going to hear from a lot of paid speakers tonight. I'm not one of them. You're also going to hear from a lot of community-based speakers. You get to listen for a long time this evening, and then you get to make some smart decisions. I'm Deb Barker. I'm the president of Morgan Junction. That's an urban village in West Seattle. We are members of the Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity because we objected to the one-size-fits-all MHA silver slipper. We're an urban village with a goal of maintaining our permanently affordable entry-level, family-sized housing in our urban village, and to that end, we request adoption of resolutions and amendments that address that goal. Morgan Junction is an urban village with a very strong planning emphasis, and we hope that we won't be dismissed because we participate and because we care about affordability. Morgan Junction's comprehensive plan amendment is, let me say that again, Morgan Junction's comprehensive plan amendments to request neighborhood planning are smart, and guess what? They could, no, no, wait, maybe they should be applied citywide. What a concept. The Planning Commission, who did mention the fact that they felt that maybe we were getting too much out of this MHA provision, was reminded that neighborhoods can have individual plans. In this case, that neighborhood, that planning goal could be sent citywide. I also support Councilmember Herbert's anti-displacement proposal. It requires more of developers than they are interested in giving, and it's really a no-brainer to replace the housing that's caused by the MHA displacement. I want to hear it decided here at MHA level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. 9A is Cindy Barker, followed by 10B, Jacinta Fitzgerald, followed by 10A, Elaine Noonehman.
I want to, Cindy Barker, I do live in Morgan. My comments are not necessarily about Morgan, but I do want to add on to one thing that Deb said. The Planning Commission is under the mistaken impression that a policy in our own urban village policy element commits OPCD to doing planning with us. It is not. It is intended to be for the stakeholder group a trigger to start the conversation around planning. So that is an air. We've pointed that out to them, and they continue to make that air. So tonight, I want to make four points on MHA. When Seattle's largest developers sent you a letter telling you the clawback amendment is not needed, that the additional height, bulk, and scale you are granting them doesn't need to be removed if MHA is found illegal, and they can still build to that without contributing to affordability, a klaxon horn should have gone off in your head. You are about to lose control of the ship. When the development community told you not to restrict their access to historic areas and actually calls them opportunity-rich areas, that should be a huge red flag. Prudence and thoughtful decision-making is needed to balance our past and our future. The third point I want to make is that I am in support of Councilmember Herbert's amendment on anti-displacement. It's an important corollary to the impacts of MHA and should be passed as part of the MHA package. Fourth, I still await, as I requested at the last select hearing, Select Committee, I await the visuals on what the RSL amendment changes would be doing. As I said, you spent two years telling people what RSL would look like, and at the last minute, you're changing the height, bulk, and scale. I think that should be disclosed and shared for full transparency. Finally, we have to address the affordability issue. There is no doubt. We depend on your thoughtfulness to do the best for all the people of Seattle. It is not the time for ideologies to narrow your views. Please be principled and encompassing in finishing the grand bargain.
Okay, next, we have 10B, followed by 10A, Elaine.
My name is Jacinta Fitzgerald.
I knew it was one of the two. I'm sorry that I.
A lot of people get that wrong. I'd like to say first that as a resident of District 3, I'm grateful to Councilor Sawant for fighting for better upzones and continued upzones. I'm disappointed that the MHA is such a small step, but I am grateful that it is in the right direction. I hope that one day we'll reach the point where, for instance, the urban centers with residential density plans of about 15 houses per acre are not zoned for SF 5,000, which is half that density. I didn't actually want to be here to speak tonight. Our intention was that my partner would be here to speak, because as an immigrant and as someone that a lot of people here might call tech trash, I don't always feel welcome to speak out. But as an immigrant and as someone who's making a lot of money from tech, I've already bought a nice place in a multifamily complex in Capitol Hill, and I'll be fine if MHA passes or not. People like me will keep moving here and keep buying places, and the children of anyone who was here before won't. My partner grew up in Whidbey Island. His parents lived in the Red Line District of Seattle in the 80s. His parents lived in the Red Line District of Seattle in the 80s. He and his brother moved here, went to UW, and don't have any anticipation of being able to afford their own place in Seattle. They're the people that are going to be pushed out. So he's not here to speak for himself, because he works a regular job and couldn't just leave at 3:00 PM like I did. A lot of people aren't here because regular people have jobs and couldn't leave in time to get on this speaker's list. So I wanted to represent him and everyone else who couldn't make it, and say that we should pass the MHA and then start working on the next step. Thank you.
Thank you. 10A is Elaine, followed by 11B Brooke Brood?
Brod.
Brod? Brod, okay. And then, followed by 11A Natalie Williams.
My name is Elaine Nonnaman. I live in the Madison Miller Urban Village, and our community is part of Seattle Coalition for Affordability, Livability, and Equity. I hear people who are representing members of the labor movement, young people who are finding they cannot find affordable housing in this city. What is unfortunate is that they believe that the MHA plan is going to actually make those neighborhoods that they want to live in accessible. In fact, where I live, 500, more than 500 units are publicly and privately subsidized. They will all be at risk. There are many centers which are transitional houses or places for people with developmental disorders, reentry, women's shelters. There is also a sizable amount of housing, both individual houses and old bricks-and-mortars buildings with a large population of people who are workforce housing. That all stands to be lost. Proportions what MHA is going to replace it with in affordable housing is very disproportionate. And in fact, there is no incentive. The developers are incentivized to build to the highest level of marketability because of the fees that they're paying. So that trade-off, that bargain, does not actually pan out in terms of what, of the affordability that is supposed to be what is driving this. I also am speaking...
Thank you. 11B is Brooke, followed by 11A Natalie Williams, followed by 12B David Ward. And congratulations, folks. We've made it through the first 20 folks, and we now have a lot more people.
Well, thank you, councilmembers, for taking all of this time to listen to all of these people on such a critical issue. My name is Brooke Brod. I live in the Roosevelt Ravenna U District area, and I'm here to speak in favor of MHA and to ask the council to pass legislation that maximizes our ability to build more homes and to build more diverse types of homes throughout the city. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to increase access to education, jobs, transit, and build a more equitable and sustainable city. When I think about the kinds of housing that these changes will allow us to build, I think of the Renew Roosevelt Development. This is right in my neighborhood. These are 13 rental townhomes, three of which are affordable units. The design fits into the neighborhood. They surround a little courtyard. They are in walking distance of a vibrant business district, coming light rail and great schools. And these townhomes are built on lots that once had three single-family homes. Or I think of this building, which is right around the corner from me. This former single-family home is a stacked apartment building. You could easily walk by this building and never know it was providing density. Unfortunately, this kind of missing-middle housing cannot be built in most of our neighborhoods. Without making changes to our zoning, much of Seattle will become a de facto gated community filled with nothing but luxury single-family homes costing upwards of $1 million. That is not the kind of future we should aspire to. I have been coming to open houses, public hearings, and info sessions for over four years. That's a lot of discussion, debate, and process. During that time, we have lost the opportunity to build 900 affordable units, and we are losing opportunity to get more funding for affordable housing. In the meantime, our housing crisis has grown. Let's not wait any longer. I urge the council to reject amendments that would scale back MHA. I urge the council to set a course that will make us a more welcoming and inclusive city that is true to our progressive values. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Okay, next we have 11A Natalie Williams, followed by 12B David Ward, followed by 12A Brittany Belay.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Williams. I live in West Seattle. I stand tonight to ask you to help me make this sign obsolete. I'm asking that MHA be, that this zoning be amended to actually require developers to provide affordable housing. Right now, they can buy out, so it's not really a requirement. It's a suggestion. And the developers that I have talked to in West Seattle, in my neighborhood, who are bulldozing affordable rentals and displacing the baker's assistant and the barista that work in my neighborhood, are building to-the-lot line, big file cabinet-looking buildings, and providing more housing for the affluent. They are building expensive condos. They are not providing affordable housing, and they tell me they don't plan to. So I am asking you to amend this legislation to require them to provide the affordable housing that this acronym supposedly says is going to happen. Thank you.
All right. 12B David Ward, 12A Brittany Belay, 13B Amy Carlson.
Hello, my name is David Ward. I believe that MHA is flawed and also does not meet the CEPA requirements. And I think it's essential to have a clawback, because without that, we need to ensure that what little housing that's already in the affordable package is able to stay there. I support the strongest possible displacement legislation. I support Lisa's, Lisa Herbold's proposal and would like to go further to ensure that we have no net loss and have one-for-one replacement and right of first refusal. This is necessary because MHA creates so little affordable housing. It's only 3% to 10%, which means that 90% to 97% of the housing will not be affordable, which means it will not be housing for everyone. EIS says that the Rainier Valley is 77% people of color, highest percentage of housing cost increases, and the highest vacancies in the city outside of downtown and South Lake Union. So people are getting displaced already in the Rainier Valley, the poorest area of our city. Also, it has 60% of the 10,000 properties that are likely to be redeveloped. That's also in the EIS, meaning, again, that the people are likely to be displaced from South Seattle. EAIS also said that if there's even a loss of even a single cultural business or community institution, it can magnify displacement. Yet there are more than 600 likely businesses believed that have almost all of the cultural institutions in South Seattle. Would you more displacement?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. 12A is Brittany, followed by 13B Amy Carlson, followed by 13A Alex Zimmerman. And I just want to say, Brittany, I really like your shirt, Bet on Women. I think that is very reflective of this evening's composition on the dais. So I thank you for wearing that shirt to commemorate the attendance this evening. Please.
My name's Becca Monteleone. I'm the chair of the Sierra Club Seattle Group, and we are all speaking as a group tonight. You should have around 160 supportive messages in your inbox from our contacts and supporters. And I personally am also a single-family homeowner who lives within the boundaries of the Othello Rezone. And as a homeowner in the Rezone, I am a strong supporter of the passage of the MHA. I will welcome more density and more affordable units.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, can you please stop the clock? Mr. Zimmerman, you are not part of this group. I'm going to ask you to take your seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for the interruption. Madam Clerk, can you please start the clock?
Having more housing and more housing types, along with the required affordable units, will make it easier for more neighbors to move in. We also, as Sierra Club, we believe that being pro-environment also means that you are pro-density, and Brittany's going to say a little bit more about that.
The Sierra Club has and continues to support MHA legislation and amendments that maintain or increase upzones. Urban affordable housing matters. Affordable housing is an environmental issue. Small and multifamily housing is more energy-efficient than large, single-family housing, resulting in lower electricity usage and therefore a smaller carbon footprint. Additionally, when people can afford to live near where they work, shop, and play, it is easier for them to choose to drive less and walk, bike, and transit more, further reducing emissions. Building more housing in the city also reduces development pressure in the agricultural areas, fragile wetlands, and wild forests and recreation areas on the fringes of our city. And these are things that we cherish and are part of our identity as the city of Seattle, and we need to protect them as well. This legislation has gone through extensive research, outreach, and analysis, and it is time to pass these common sense changes and begin creating the urban affordable housing that our city so desperately needs.
Hi there. My name is Whitney Ririck, also a member of the Seattle Sierra Club Executive Committee. And I wanted to say a few words as a person who lives near a rapidly densifying area off of Union Street. I'm in a single-family home, but a lot of my new neighbors are in new multifamily buildings. And I'm going to tell you, during the last snowstorm, we had a blast. Everybody was out there in the alley. We shared sleds. We shared shovels. And it didn't matter. Some of us were renters, some of us were homeowners, some of us were from the multifamily building. The guy with the best shovel was in the apartment building on the end of the street, to be honest with you. He was shoveling because his property manager wouldn't do it. So there's this sense of community that extends beyond what kind of housing we live in. And when I talk to my single-family neighbors, I don't hear from them, "Oh, man, there's another apartment building coming." I hear, "Hey, we can walk. We can walk places. Look, the bus is late. Oh, hey, maybe it would be great if there was a better bike lane." We don't hear complaints. My neighbors are welcoming to our renter neighbors, and I just wanted to convey that, that even though I'm in a single-family home now after years of apartment living, there's a lot of us in single-family homes that are really psyched about the higher density and the diversity it's bringing, and the businesses and the walkability that it brings with it.
Hi, my name is Bill Samson. I volunteer with the Sierra Club on a task force that tries to fight against fossil fuels, advocate for renewable energy, and I volunteer with the Seattle Group as well. I really like volunteering with these two groups because it gets to the intersectionality of transportation, housing, and energy use. And I think MHA is a very important thing to pass because it will increase density, and if we don't have more density, then we get more sprawl because more people are moving into Seattle. And so unless we want to stop people from moving Seattle, I think we can welcome people into Seattle and have more dense housing to be able to, and to... So if we have more dense housing, then transportation options will be better. It'll be more feasible to have electric cars, or walk, or take the bus around town. So I'm supportive of MHA.
Thank you very much for your time. We support the most robust version of the legislation that you can pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we have about 140 more people signed up, so we're going to be here until the very end. And I just wanted to make sure that folks understood that we have 140 folks signed up still. And this lovely public comment card box is still available for those of you who might not be able to stick around until 10:00 PM at night with us. And of course, you are still encouraged to find all your friends in the room and sign up as a group and provide us public testimony in five minutes. Just friendly reminders, we still have 140 people to go through.
And we really like those card boxes.
And we do read the comments that are left in that box. Okay, next, we have 13B Amy Carlson, followed by 13A Alex Zimmerman, followed by 14B Randy Benneker.
Hi, my name is Amy Carlson. I live in the Queen Anne Community. And there, I'm going to address my comments to some specific issues. First of all, some general issues, and then to some specific issues. General issues to be addressed in this legislation include development impact fees, make sure infrastructure is in place first before doing the development, include a report of the success of MHA upzoning that is already complete in areas close to downtown, include a clawback provision, and include community councils in neighborhood planning. My specific issues have to do with Queen Anne. The Boston Queen Anne Safeway Block, it's being proposed to be 75 feet, which is way out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, at the rest of the business district. And I have spoken to a lot of the small-scale businesses that are in the area. They're either not aware of this or are very much opposed. The other area is Gayler Street, west of Queen Anne Avenue, where there is proposed height changes. And if the height changes go in, there should be protection for the neighborhoods that are adjacent to that height area. In conclusion, the MHA upzones and the suppression of neighborhood voices in planning are a gift to developers to maximize profits. The results will be massive displacement and gentrification without preservation of older affordable buildings. The small amount of new subsidized housing gained do not offset the large and uncounted loss of older low-market housing. This proposal should go back to the drawing board for further review of negative impacts to our city. The top-down, city-wide, one-size-fits-all...
Thank you.
...plan is not appropriate. Thank you.
13A is Alex Zimmerman, followed by 14B Randy Benneker, followed by 14A Chris Olson.
Can I get you a tea?
Zihai, my lovely...
Good time for a potty break.
Sweet sugar Fuhrer. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I don't want to speak to them. I want to speak to you. You guys look to me like a very nice rabbit, all ready for barbecue. You know what this means? Each of your speech looks like you represent America in French Parliament. You know what this means? Very nice. Why? You don't know what has happened for the last four or five years? You don't know what has happened with Amazon and this crook? It's a pure fascism. The government, together with corporations, are blood and money from us. You're very nice. Why are you so very nice? Because you're so stupid or because you're super smart? Everybody keeps their ass in safe condition. I spoke to you because it's very important. So you stand up, cleanse this dirty chamber from this killer who killed not only politicians, he killed 1,000 people, 1,000 people every year. We lose everything right now. I lived in this city for 33 years, and I see everything what has happened right now. When you will act like a rabbit who are ready for barbecue, nothing will be changed. So wake up, freaking idiot. Stand up, you American. I, American, stand up and cleanse this dirty chamber from this crook. Look, it's a killer. It's killed all men here. There's no man more existing in this city. Ah? Yes, it's a killer. So this is exactly what I spoke to you right now. Remember, Alex Zimmerman. Stand up and make real changes. Clean this dirty chamber from this crook and man-killer.
Oh. No, I'm not.
All right. Well...
Sorry, everybody.
At least you didn't speak until the very end. All right. So we are going to go ahead and move on through. 14B Randy Benneker, followed by 14A Chris Olson, followed by 14... 14B Randy Benneker, followed by 14A Chris Olson, followed by 15B Mike Ruby.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Council members, my name is Randy Benneker. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors, here to encourage that you move swiftly with the completion of the MHA program. Seattle is in a desperate need for housing supply at every price point. It will be impossible to make real inroads on homelessness and overall housing affordability unless we confront the underlying problem that there is simply not enough housing relative to demand. It's why rental and ownership housing at every price point is skyrocketing with the most severe impacts on those at the lower end of the income spectrum. Your work on MHA is a critical piece of the solution. No question, these are tough votes to take, and your leadership is much appreciated. I think there's some value in remembering how we got here and why we need to get more out of our existing land base. More than 25 years ago, our region, our state, our city, took an important and courageous stand against sprawl. In the Growth Management Act, we imposed an urban growth boundary. We agreed to channel growth into cities, and we committed to preserving forest farms and wildlands. We succeeded largely in conserving these great resources. Throughout the region, we directed growth into urban areas, and we created new and renewed communities like Capitol Hill, downtown, South Lake Union, and Columbia City, with more on the way. It was the right thing to do then, and it still is the right thing to do. However, from the very beginning, we failed to be realistic about the supply of housing we needed on the urban side of the growth boundary. And having set unrealistically low housing targets in the city and throughout King County, we are now faced... We're behind the eight ball now, and we need to make up time. Your work on MHA is critical now. It'll help. It'll usher in affordability and relief to a severely constrained market. Please move forward on MHA in its most robust form. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next up, Chris Olson, and then Mike Ruby. And after Mike, if Russ wants to get ready, Russ Saunders. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, council members. My name is Chris Olson, and I am a North Capitol Hill resident. I live one block off of I-5 on the hill facing Eastlake. I'm here tonight representing myself and some of my neighbors who are here to respectfully request your vote against one specific recently announced amendment to the MHA preferred alternative. It's in Eastlake, District 4. It's Amendment 4-18, and it will increase the zoning on Boylston Avenue to mid-rise. The preferred alternative already increases the zoning on Boylston to LR3, an increase to approximately 40 feet. Amendment 418 will drastically increase it even more to mid-rise, around 80 feet. Boylston is the road along I-5 on the Eastlake side. 80-foot mid-rise buildings will trap pollutants and act like a noise wall, reverberating noise onto the North Capitol Hill side of the freeway. In a recent 520 noise study over a 42-hour period, the noise averaged 72 decibels in our neighborhood. That's as loud as a vacuum cleaner. It's reasonable to expect that these tall buildings will increase that noise and trap pollutants. Even a small increase in either will drastically impact the livability of our neighborhood. And we believe this goes against the stated purpose of the Land Use Code to promote public health, safety, and general welfare. Additionally, the older multifamily houses on Boylston are already some of the most affordable in Eastlake and Seattle. And we don't think that building new developments there will make them affordable. Mid-rises belong near transportation hubs. Eastlake has one bus, the 70. I'm not here to argue against density or affordable housing, only to argue against this single misapplication of the solution, which will cause real harm to North Capitol residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So before we move on to 15B, which is Mike Ruby, I just am noticing that we are receiving more guests inside of chambers from the overflow room. So for those of you who are already sitting down, if you have a seat that is next to you that is empty, can you please raise your hand? Okay, for those folks who are up on the back wall, if you'd like to find a seat, please look for one of these raised hands, and please make yourself comfortable, because we have about 135 people or so to make our way through. So you're going to be standing for a while. So please help us make room for those new folks who've entered into chambers. Thank you. Thank you so much for helping each other out. I really appreciate that. Okay, next speaker is 15B Mike Ruby, followed by 15A Russ Saunders, followed by 16B Allison Bolgiano.
Could we wait just a second till it quiets down? Okay.
Sure, but we're going to go ahead and start the time.
Let's go. My name is Michael Ruby, and I'm presenting testimony to you on the MHA. The addendum to the final EIS for Historic Resources issued only two weeks ago is inadequate and misleading as respect to historic preservation in the Wallingford neighborhood that would be threatened with displacement by the proposed rezone of much of the area to various low-rise zones. Now, it is possible to make some evaluation and information from the presented material for the Wallingford Urban Village in the addendum. It does correctly point out that there are four structures landmarked by the City of Seattle in one building that is determined to be National Register eligible. But if we look carefully at the information, we find it is inadequate. There's just almost nothing there except for a map, which seems to have identified 87 properties as worth an in-depth evaluation for their historic preservation value. However, based on the maps and databases available in the city, there appear to be 115 properties in that same area that should be accorded that. The process really is only beginning in Wallingford to develop a conservation or historic preservation district. Unlike actions elsewhere, we are moving very deliberately, wanting to consult and work with folks who would be impacted by such actions. And that does take time. Looking elsewhere, we see there are many properties that have been submitted to the state for review as National Register eligible. This process is only beginning in Wallingford. It takes time to mature. At the end of the process, I'm sure many more properties in Wallingford will be deemed eligible. The activity around rezoning has forced the issue in terms of trying to narrow down a very large area that has firm roots in vintage housing stock that should be accorded some recognition. And the material I submitted, and you'll be able to read...
Thank you. Your time is up. We are going to move on to 15A Russ Saunders, followed by 16B Allison, followed by 16A John Stewart.
Thank you for hearing me, council. My name is Russ Saunders, and I represent my family's business, Handy Andy Rent-A-Tool. It's been on Aurora for 40 years, coming this... end of this year. Now, I want to talk about the zoning change on Aurora. And it should never have been changed from C1, C2 to NC3. It's in direct violation of the EIS and the pollution from the trucks. It's a major truck street. In fact, it's the largest major truck street north of... well, outside of any urban village. Many of you worked on the freight master plan, and it's in direct violation of that. It goes against it. The street doesn't have the capacity with six-foot-wide sidewalks being 90 feet wide to support having somewhere upwards of 8,000 apartments, 10,000-plus people. It creates a pedestrian nightmare. This is an area that the pedestrians should not be placed, the density, right along Aurora. It's not where we want to house people. The low-income should not be forced to live next to a very noisy and polluted street from the emissions. That's not what MHA is about. We should be looking at giving opportunities to those low-income people, not forcing them to live on Aurora, which is completely against the whole Mount Laurel doctrine that started affordable housing. And I thank you for that. Please don't rezone Aurora and push those people to live in a place that is not quality and won't provide a safe environment for them. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have 16B Allison Bolgiano, followed by 16A John Stewart, followed by 17B... it's either Ratna or Rafa.
Rafa.
I'm sorry?
Ratna.
Ratna? Okay. All right, 16B Allison Bolgiano.
Good evening, council members. My name is Allison Bolgiano. Last Friday, I became a homeowner in the U District, in District 4. And so tonight, with full recognition of the pretty immense generational privilege that allowed me to reach that milestone, I'm here tonight to say an enthusiastic yes in my backyard to MHA. Or maybe I should say yes on my block since I don't have a backyard at my studio apartment in a housing cooperative, but I'm still pretty excited about it. So I'm also here tonight supporting MHA as a staff member of Bellwether Housing. We're Seattle's largest nonprofit provider of affordable housing. And city funding is a crucial piece of what allows us to do great things in the city. I'm going to talk specifically about District 4. One cool thing about my new place is out my kitchen window, I can see our Bora Court, a brand-new building we opened last year with 133 affordable homes. Since 2008, we have owned and operated 70 affordable apartments in Wallingford. And right now, we're working with Mercy Housing to build 256 affordable homes immediately adjacent to the upcoming Roosevelt Light Rail Station. These are tremendous opportunities. This is the kind of housing we build and other nonprofits build, but this is also the kind of housing that's being delayed by not having enough city funding. We have shovel-ready projects, and their completion dates, or their start dates even, are getting pushed out. We thank the city for giving us what you do. We need there to be more, and MHA is going to help get us there. It could easily double the amount of funding available for nonprofit affordable housing that's getting built in neighborhoods from Roosevelt to Greenwood to Rainier Beach, all over the city. So I want to encourage the council to enact MHA fully and robustly and do it expediently. Thank you.
Thank you. 16A is John Stewart's group, followed by 17B Ratna, followed by 17A Tom Allen.
I'm John Stewart, and I'm here with my Friends of Ravenna Cowan. We're a Washington State nonprofit. We're here in support of two MHA amendments proposed by Councilmember Johnson, 4A, 4-4A, and 4-4B. These are amendments consistent with the MHA EIS addendum dated February 7. Removing historic districts from the MHA rezones was identified as an important mitigating measure. We hope that every council member will vote for these amendments. We'd like to thank Councilmember Johnson for presenting these amendments, and Councilmember Harrell for a similar amendment supporting the Mount Baker Park National Historic District. The mission of the Friends of Ravenna Cowan is to preserve and protect the heritage of Ravenna Cowan neighborhood as a shared community resource for all. It took more than 2,000 volunteer hours to complete the application for the Washington State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation for the Ravenna Cowan North Historic District. This district is now listed on both the Washington State Heritage Register of Historic Places and the National Register of Historic Places. 442 homes are within the district boundaries. 407 of these homes were built in the first three decades of the 1900s. Edward Curtis was creating his tribute to the North American Indian in these same three decades. Let's think outside the frame. In January of 2019, volunteers canvassed the residents and visitors of our historic district with a petition stating that the proposed MHA upzone should not be enacted within the boundaries of the Ravenna Cowan North National Historic District. The petition resulted in 562 signatures in support of this statement. The National Park Service has recognized the architecture of this district is historic, remarkably cohesive, intact, and well-maintained. Adopting these amendments is an opportunity to leave a legacy for all, and we'd like you all to take part in this. We assure you that we also support increasing affordable housing options in Seattle. We recognize the scope of the problem, but do not see this as being incompatible with protecting the integrity of Seattle's historic and architecturally significant neighborhoods. Once the architectural integrity of a neighborhood is destroyed, it can never be reclaimed. We urge you to adopt the amendments protecting this historically important idea. And thank you for your consideration, and thank you for showing up this evening.
Thank you. Okay, 17B is Ratna, followed by 17A Tom Allen, followed by 18B Ann Selznick.
Hello, councilwomen. Thank you for the opportunity tonight for the testimony. My name is Ratna Varao. I live in the Crown Hill Urban Village in a modest 720-square-feet, single-family, two-bedroom, one-bath house on a 4,000-square-foot lot, and I've lived there for the last 11 years. My street does not have any sidewalks, so when the snowstorm hit, instead of clearing sidewalks, my neighbors comprised of three house owners and three renters spent about two and a half hours, creating a path for water drainage on our block to prevent any flooding from the snow melt and rain that followed. I'm a single-income household, and my vision for the future is to create additional housing units on my lot so that as I plan for my retirement, I can create extra income. That way, I can in the future either rent out the new unit or move myself into it and rent out my large 720-square-foot house. I'm in strong support of Councilor Bryman's amendments for District 6, for our village, as they provide me with the framework to do the development I envisioned to make by having my lot be RSL instead of LR1. If my property were to be zoned LR1, which is the recommendation of the executive legislation, I will not pursue these plans, as it would not make sense based on the proposed zoning. My block is already very diverse. A third of the block has single-family houses where renters live in, and in addition to that, we also have Seattle Housing Authority low-income housing across the street from me. We know one another, and we are a community. I like the diversity on our block, and ultimately would like to also contribute to it by creating housing myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have 17A Tom Allen, followed by 18B Ann Selznick, followed by 18A Matthew Maurer.
Good evening, council. My name is Tom Allen. Thank you for your time this evening. I know you're going to be here for a long time, much longer than I will be. Earlier this month, I was having beers with some friends, and one of the friends told me, "Hey, I'm moving in a few years." And we asked why, you know? And he replied back that it's a beautiful city. He loves it here. But he can't continue living in a city where he, one day, can't afford to own a home. And rent is so high right now, he can't save for one at the rate that housing prices are increasing. I was heartbroken when he said this, you know? This is a very optimistic guy. He's gone through a lot in his life, but this housing was too much that he had to give up. Another friend had unexpectedly moved out of her apartment, and she was homeless and couch-surfing for months. And she had trouble finding an apartment because all the rents were too high. She still had to pay the lease on her old one. My childhood best friend that I grew up with nine miles from here, he had to move to South Tacoma because that was all he could afford for his family. And he didn't want to live there, but he kind of had to with the way the rents were going, even in a city like Benton. The status quo is causing displacement. This legislation is needed. This legislation was needed five years ago. Any amendments that lower the number of units leads to housing lost. Any delays in passing this legislation hurt real people. As Dan Bertlet said, "Housing delayed is housing denied." Let's not delay... or let's not deny anyone. Please pass this legislation and go as big as you can. Thank you.
18B is Ann, followed by 18A Matthew Maurer, followed by 19B Jeff... oh, boy.
Roll.
What is it? What is it?
Dubrul.
Dubrul. All right, Anne.
Hi, I'm Anne Selznick, and as a resident, I invite all of you to come and visit Crown Hill Urban Village, much like Councilmember O'Brien has thoughtfully done many times. You're probably already familiar with the parking lots and auto-centric businesses along 15th Avenue that could use revitalization. But if you walk our side streets, specifically north of 85th, you might be surprised to see modest-sized houses, missing sidewalks, and poor drainage. Did you know that Ingram High School students take yellow bus services to high school because the public transportation's inadequate?
Can I interrupt you just a second? Would you stop the clock for a second? Would the woman please, with the sign, if you want to hold it, hold it steady? It's really distracting, and we have a hard time watching. I know what you're doing, but I'm trying to hear the speakers. So if you could sit there quietly, thank you.
Should I go back to the bus service at Ingram High School?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, in any case, you won't see any light rail station, or a community center, or a library, and you might agree with Councilmember O'Brien's amendments, in that they make a lot of sense, not just for the needs of the neighborhood, but for the opportunities in the neighborhood as well. His amendments also accurately reflect community input. I was a participant in the Hala Focus Groups, which included representatives from all over the city. And the draft maps for Crown Hill that came out of that process featured RSL zoning on most of the side streets, and maximized heights on our currently underutilized arterials. I also later attended and took notes at our MHA Design Workshop, where owners and renters alike all commented on the draft maps. The primary feedback was acceptance of RSL zoning and support for much-needed development on the neighborhood's arterials. So I believe that Councilmember O'Brien's amendments were crafted very well in finding a balance between the needs that the neighborhood has and the opportunities that the neighborhood has as well. And thank you in advance for approving them, and come visit us. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. 18A is Matthew, followed by 19B Jeff, followed by 19A Anton Decum.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Matthew Maurer, and I'm here today representing Vulcan Incorporated. We're a proud member of the Seattle For Everyone Coalition, a broad partnership of diverse advocates who believe in the promise of MHA, a promise which includes creating more income-restricted housing while also creating more market-rate housing units at the same time. Several recent studies have shown that Seattle metro area needs to add at least 175,000 housing units to meet the current demand. MHA, if done right, can help us get there. We are here today to support these continued efforts, and ask you to reject amendments that reduce the ability to create the much-needed housing that will come from MHA. Specifically, we urge the council to reject the wide swath of map amendments that, if enacted, would significantly reduce the capacity within the MHA boundaries for housing. We ask that you reject the commercial affordability amendments. This is a one-size-fits-all mandate, filled with unintended consequences that will impact the viabilities of retailers throughout Seattle. Finally, we urge you, the council, to reject Amendment B3 and any other amendments that aim to change the fees and requirements before the program has had a chance to be fully implemented. To make adjustments to the fees and requirements without any empirical evidence as to the performance of MHA is bad policy and a direct breach of the grand bargain. I'd also like to add that the laws of supply and demand apply to housing, and if we don't have any MHA and we have no upzones, it doesn't make Seattle any less desirable, and people will still want to move here. If we don't have housing for these people to go, they're going to compete for the existing housing stock, in turn increasing the prices for everybody. So, thank you for the time, and we look forward to working with all of you to ensure MHA works as intended. Thank you.
All right. 19B is Jeff. 19A is Anton. And 20B is Nicole Grant. Please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jeff Dubrul. I've lived in Wallingford for 10 years. I'd like to thank you all for staying late to hear our testimony on this. I'd encourage you to pass MHA as quickly as possible. The Seattle process has dragged this out for four years, during which rents have skyrocketed. Many people have become homeless, and many others have become underhoused or driven out of town. Predominantly, single-family zoning was entrenched in the racist, apprehensive plan of 1923. Harlan Bartholomew, who was hired to consult on this plan, as he was in many West Coast cities, said this about the St. Louis Plan he also architected. He said, "It's to preserve the more desirable residential neighborhood and prevent movement into the finer residential districts by colored people." Before 1923, multifamily homes were allowed, anywhere in Seattle, were allowed, anywhere you were allowed, to build a framed building. Subsequent revisions into the 1990s made it successively harder to build anywhere. Now even duplicateses are prohibited in 85% of the city. Our housing crisis is self-inflicted, and it's long past time we corrected it. Hala alone will not accomplish this, but it's a start. Please pass it, and we can move on to far more substantial changes. To turn to a slightly different topic of our homelessness crisis, in New Orleans, two years after Hurricane Katrina, 11,700 people were rendered homeless, a number very similar to what was counted our last one-night count. In those last 10 years, they have brought this down by 90% through a housing-first approach. That's permanent housing, not shelters or transitional housing. Families who become homeless and are permanently housed within 45 days, and they're working to bring that number down. Veterans who become homeless are now housed in an apartment, permanently, within 30 days of becoming homeless. And thus far, only five homeless veterans exist outside permanent housing due to their mental illness. We can do this. Stop talking, start doing. Thank you.
Thank you. 19A is Anton, in that group. 20B is Nicole Grant, followed by 20A Lee Pate.
Hello, we are representing the American Institute of Architects in Seattle. My name is Jackie Aiello, and I am an architectural designer, and I live in District Six.
My name's Anton Decum. I'm a renter in District Three.
My name's Becca Buck. I'm an urban designer. I'm a renter in District Three.
My name's Natalie Boverman. I'm an interior architectural designer, and I represent District Seven.
Scott Cochran, licensed architect, and I represent District Five.
So as I said, I live in District Six, and I live in the heart of Greenwood. And I've recently seen a lot of change regarding development in my neighborhood, most of it, like the increase in housing stock on Greenwood Avenue, I'm excited for, as I see great potential for density throughout District Six. I support the upzoning proposed throughout my district. However, I am concerned about the recently proposed amendments that limit the increased density to my district. We're predominantly a single-family residential area in Seattle, and the amendments aim to keep it as such. This is an irresponsible action, as our community continues to grow, and all that is available are costly condos and large homes for sale. This is a common trend happening throughout the city, and the amendments across all districts to lower the proposed zoning aim to derail the initial purpose of MHA. Rents and housing costs continue to be unaffordable for the working-class citizen throughout Seattle, as those that live in single-residential zoning continue to be able to ignore the housing crisis. The MHA was meant to address these issues and not contribute to them. Please do not allow these amendments to be within the MHA, and ensure that its original purpose is preserved.
While reading through the recently proposed amendments, I was struck by how quickly the mutually-agreed-upon goals, which had been painstakingly developed over four years of community input, were chipped away by homeowners groups seeking to protect the property values and current lifestyle on their neck of the woods. MHA's stated goals of helping Seattle grow equitably and sustainably cannot be achieved when upzones are removed at the request of those fortunate enough to own their home. Seattle is home to all of us, whether we own, rent, or struggle to find housing. Addressing the needs of these diverse groups is a citywide effort, and requires a cohesive policy which allocates zoning capacity and affordability requirements throughout the city. Districts should be upzoned based on their access to transit and ability to expand access to opportunities to a greater swath of our community. I urge our council members to remember the shared vision of inclusivity, connectedness, sustainability, and community vibrance, which were developed with targeted outreach to a broad array of residents, as they consider these amendments.
Hi, thank you all for being here tonight. So I live in the central area, just near Little Saigon. There are a lot of small businesses in my neighborhood that are going to be displaced due to new development. So there's an Ethiopian restaurant near me, and there's also a Vietnamese cafe that are not going to be here much longer, because there are land-use signs in front of their businesses. It's almost assured that these businesses won't be able to afford the retail spaces that are built there in the new buildings. So displaced isn't really the right word. I think these businesses are just gone. And so I understand that accommodating more people in Seattle means that buildings will be torn down, and renters, both individuals and businesses, will be forced to move. However, the situation is as bad as it is today because of decades of bad land-use policy. These policies have explicitly sought to preserve the comforts and privileges bestowed upon single-family zones by limiting multifamily developments to a small fraction of the city. This has concentrated renters in scarce multifamily areas, and the scarcity has resulted in higher cost of living and higher rates of displacement, as the land underneath these renters has increased faster than other residential zones. Why should renters bear the burden of Seattle's recent growth while homeowners continue to reap their rewards? MHA is an opportunity to correct course by upzoning more city land, not just upzoning the same land more. During the ongoing amendment process, council must resist pressure from neighborhood groups to further densify multifamily zones while leaving single-family zones virtually untouched. Council must resist calls to reduce upzones or to trade upzones and downzones, as these are just attempts to preserve the status quo. People talk about how difficult it is to remove deep-seated structural barriers that entrench inequality in our society. This is your opportunity to remove some of those barriers, or at least chip away at them. I hope you seize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is 20B Nicole Grant, followed by 20A Lee Pate.
Thank you, councilmembers. Nicole Grant, I'm the head of the Martin Luther King County Labor Council, and a Seattle lifer. I am here to say, please pass MHA. There are 150,000 workers moving to King County every year. Some of them are relatively well-compensated, such as tech workers who come from all over the world to Seattle to create and maintain the internet. I use it every day. Thank you. Some of them are workers in precarious work. They come from all over the world and work at Uber, or for Instacart, and they need housing as well. Please pass the version of MHA that goes towards the goal of creating the housing that these tens upon tens of thousands of workers who are moving here every year need. On behalf of the labor movement, we welcome all workers to our city.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. All right. Next up is 20A Lee Pate, followed by 21B Dylan Kate, followed by 21A Douglas... Oh, I'm sorry, but I cannot say your last name. Lu...Lutgen?
Lutgen.
Lutgen. Please.
Good evening. Thanks for being here and hearing us. My name is Lee Pate, and I live in Crown Hill Urban Village, and I'm speaking today in strong support of Councilmember Mike O'Brien's amendments for our community. He and his staff have walked our neighborhood multiple times, and his amendments are not only going to help contribute to mandatory housing affordability, they're going to benefit and create a vibrant neighborhood that's going to be great for everybody. The current neighbors who live there, the neighbors who are moving in into the hundreds of apartments that are already being built or permitted or just open, and the new neighbors that we'll welcome after MHA passes. We want to thank the council also, thank you, for approving neighborhood planning for our community, and that's just getting started. And it's exciting to see what might be possible as we move forward in our community, as these changes are implemented. We have opportunities to create a vibrant area in the center of our district that's currently, single, big-box stores and big parking lots and areas that can be revitalized become vibrant houses and businesses to replace some of the businesses that we have lost. And we are especially excited about the amendments that will extend residential small lot over into areas that are currently zoned low-rise in the executive's proposal. You know, on my block, just my one block, we have...three of my neighbors are teachers, one is a firefighter, two are ferry workers, they're all union members. We have a metal worker, we have a nurse. There are several single women, including myself, who bought our homes on our 70 cents to the dollar of wages equity. And we also have three households of families who rent, and group homes, a group home of a family that rents. Our homes were affordable when we bought years ago. We can't say the same now, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, so just like that, we've made it through the first 40. We have about 100 folks left signed up. It is 17:17 PM. We're going to stay here until the very end and make sure everybody gets their two minutes. So let's keep going through the list. The next person is 21B Dylan Kate, followed by 21A Douglas Lutgen, followed by 22B Randy Ridle.
Vice Chair Gonzalez and councilmembers, thank you for being here and working long hours to hear our testimony tonight. My name is Dylan Kate, and I'm a new homeowner and resident in District One, where I'm very proud to be represented by Councilmember Herbold. Unfortunately, I'm here tonight to testify against your amendment and in favor of the full implementation of MHA upzones. I grew up in rural Vermont on a house on former farmland with 10 acres. I remember falling asleep to the sound of crickets in the summer, and I could go cross-country skiing right out of my back door in the winter. So needless to say, I'm someone who appreciates green space and trees and sunlight. I'm also an urban studies major, so I understand the importance of historic preservation, and I agree with many people here that big business, including for-profit developers, have too much power in our politics. But here's the truth: none of those arguments entitles me to deny anyone else's right to housing in our city. I love my neighborhood. I live next door to people who've been there for more than 30 years, and just down the hill from new art galleries and restaurants that are opening up in White Center. And what makes our neighborhood great is not that it never changes. What makes my neighborhood great is that it is always changing, is that it's a living, breathing, dynamic, changing place, where people from all sorts of backgrounds get a chance to live together and learn from each other. And our zoning laws have not kept pace with the number of new people who want to move into neighborhoods like mine. The fact is, there are more people who want to live in my neighborhood than there's housing available for them. And failing to upzone neighborhoods like mine, with great transit, vibrant food and art scenes, and great schools, is like building a wall around those neighborhoods and putting up a big "Do Not Enter" sign. It's saying that only people like me, who have secure housing now, should be able to live there. If we hadn't purchased our home 18 months ago, we would not be able to afford to live in our neighborhood now, and I would be excluded, even with all the privileges I have as a middle-class, white homeowner. And I noticed that people of my demographic are well-represented in this testimony, and I also want to point out that there are many people who are not here tonight and don't have the ability to testify. We cannot build a role around the incredible neighborhoods that make up this city. Please pass Hala and MHA with all of the upzones. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. 21A is Douglas, followed by 22B Randy Ridle, followed by 22A Deborah...I cannot read your last name, but you are the North Capitol Hill Group. Please.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Doug Lutgen. I'm a resident of West Seattle. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Dakota Place Park. Several years ago, I was asked to speak before a council committee on parks to secure and advocate for additional funding to buy the park, and that occurred, and we thank the council for doing that. That park is a landmarked park, both the park grounds and the building. It's a former power substation. And in the role as the president of Friends of Dakota Place Park, it's my role to advocate for the park and the protection of the park. I think, really, we all want Seattle to be better. We all perhaps have a different view of how Seattle is better, but we all want the city to be better. But regardless of how the city works and how it's built in the future, we have to have parks. It is almost like saying we're going to build additional buildings without putting in power or plumbing. We have to have parks, and as our city becomes more dense, as we build more housing, affordable or otherwise, it doesn't matter, we need parks. The addendum that was done for the EIS, we would argue, was inadequate. In fact, even though Dakota Place Park is a landmark park, it is nothing but a dot on a map on a very far-back page of the report. It doesn't talk about the impacts in the park, it doesn't talk about what can be done to mitigate for the park. So we would argue and advocate for either further work on the historic aspects, historic ... cultural structures and facilities of the city, or that amendments be made so that, essentially, an area around these parks, these historic resources are carved out. I'm also here tonight as a homeowner in West Seattle, and I currently live in an area that has proposed increased zoning, but that increased zoning will no longer have the adjacency requirements. I advocate for inclusion of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Next is 22B Randy Riedel, followed by 22A Deborah, followed by 23B Michael... It looks like Mosh, Mash? Marsh? All right. Randy.
My name is Randy Riedel, and I'm the self-proclaimed president of the 41st Avenue Southwest Truncated Block Association, not to be confused with the Morgan Junction Association. And I've talked to every homeowner on my block, and every one of us wants to redevelop eventually. Some of us have been... I've been there 65 years, and the idea of 30 to 40 people replacing the two, my wife and I, sort of delights me. And I don't understand how reducing or increasing the housing supply somehow reduces it. If some of these amendments that have come up, reducing the upzones, pass, then we're kind of turning our back on a concept of urban villages and the idea of protecting remaining single-family areas. We've got to react to the hundreds of thousands of people that are moving here, which I kind of like. You know, a lot of them I've met, and they're fun to talk to if you can get their phones away from them. I find that just grabbing it and putting it in my pocket helps.
Does the trick.
So...
Gets her attention.
You know, we spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars on this study and planning, and it's time to vote for it and, you know, get rid of the, you know, "not in my backyard" kind of amendments, and just pass the thing. And it's going to result in more housing, whether people think so or not. Thank you.
22A is Deborah. And Deborah, you signed up as a group?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got your group with you here. And then 23B is Michael Marsh, followed by 23A Nick Woods. Please.
My name is Deborah Hanula, and I am one of 50-plus households and growing, known now as the North Capitol Hill Against Rezone Misuse. Some of my fellow neighbors are with me here tonight. I would like to read a few statements tonight, and I thank you all for your time. We are not opposed, of course, to affordable housing. I was a public defender. Some of us are on the Mary's Place Board, and we support the current LR3 zoning in the area west of Boylston. Under MHA's text amendment proposal, the allowed heights in the LR3 zone will increase by 10 feet. The EIS preferred alternative would include that 10-foot increase, but no more. We're here to object and ask that you to vote "no" on MHA proposed Amendment 418. That amendment would upzone this area to MR. This would represent an increase in allowed height from the current 40 feet to 80 feet. This should be rejected for four reasons. One, it's a loss of affordable housing. The amendment will undercut your efforts to provide more affordable housing. It will encourage the demolition of the most affordable housing in East Lake to be replaced with less affordable, higher-priced housing. While increased density might lead to more affordable housing in some areas, that will not be the case here. Loss of historic resources. Thanks to the EIS addendum on historic resources, we now know that there are six historic buildings in the three blocks of Boylston south of East Louisa. These three blocks in particular should be spared from demolition incentives embodied in the MR upzone. Loss of neighborhood aesthetics. The upzone is going to create unnecessary adverse impacts for the surrounding neighborhood. While adverse impacts may be tolerable if necessary to accommodate affordable housing, here the adverse impacts will arise from a proposal that will undercut affordable housing goals and risk the loss of historic resources. This should be rejected. And we're all here also because of the noise and safety issue. The Seattle Municipal Code Ordinance, Chapter 2508, is noise control, and it's a crime to violate it. It can be punishable for up to six months in jail and a $3,000 fine. Noise means the intensity, duration, and character of sounds from any and all sources. Public noise means any unreasonable sound which either annoys, injures, interferes with, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, or safety of an entire community or neighborhood, although the extent of that damage may be unequal. Ralph Mayman lives in the Harvard building, which is apartments, on Harvard Avenue East. He was living there when the freeway wall was built around 2005 that definitely increased the noise from the freeway. There's been a study done and referred to, but that study done was in 2009, and the traffic has increased substantially from that. Under the Seattle Municipal Code 2508 Noise Control, there's supposed to be an administrator that assists citizens and city departments in evaluating and reducing the noise impact and planning officials in evaluating the noise component in planning and zoning actions. The noise issue also results in a safety issue. We had a burglary at my house where, in a period of a few hours, people took a crowbar, broke through double-pane glass, and shattered the whole living room with glass, and yet my next-door neighbor, Susie Junau, didn't hear it at all, and she was sitting right there. That's one of our problems with the safety. Another resident wrote this, Jody and Stephanie Biggs. As residents and homeowners in North Capitol Hill, traffic noise from I-5 is already a major issue for us. To hold a conversation after having stepped out of our front door, we must raise our volume to a yell to be heard if we're more than a few feet apart. We have triple-pane windows and extra high-density insulation, and yet that's what we're doing. So to build this wall, which we're going to face, okay, because we're on Harvard and Broadway and the house is behind us and 10th, and we sit above I-5, and the noise is already tremendous, and it's causing harm. And I'm going to read to you from another person who took the time to write this, Carol Ioki Kramer, who's also here. I'm writing this letter to you as a very concerned Seattleite. I was born and raised on Capitol Hill and continue to live in the house...
Sorry, Deborah, you're out of time. I'm so sorry. We're happy to take any of those statements if you haven't mailed them to us yet.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I will leave these, and we have been writing, and Carol has submitted hers as well. It's a problem with the sound. Thank you.
Thank you. 23B is Michael Marsh, followed by 23A Nick Woods, followed by 24B Anna Bonia.
My name is Michael Marsh. I am a board member of Heron Habitat Helpers. HHH works to help to protect Kiwanis Memorial Preserve Park and to make it a more inviting area for native birds and other native animals. The park's main feature, I should say that it's just east of Discovery Park in Magnolia. The park's main feature is a deep, forested ravine where great blue herons have nested at least since 1993. We conduct work parties to restore native vegetation, and we monitor the breeding activity of the herons. We're concerned about two things: the upzoning of buildings bordering Kiwanis Memorial Preserve Park, and noise from construction, such as at Fort Lawton, if more development occurs there. Construction noise and unusual visible activities, such as large construction equipment and especially tree felling scares herons. And in the early part of the year in particular, it may make them decide to abandon their usual nesting colony. The Director of Seattle Department of Construction and Industry has established a Director's Rule 13-82018 for Great Blue Heron Management. This rule prohibits most activities that might cause herons to nest, not to nest. While the rule does not directly address building height, it prohibits tree felling within a year round and requires that any development should be limited to be consistent with baseline development conditions in the vicinity, including light and ambient noise levels. In other words, the baseline would be the community around it.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Appreciate it. 23A is Nick Woods, followed by 24B Anna, followed by 24A Iskra Johnson.
Hi, my name is Nick Woods. I live in the U District, and I'm a tech worker who makes $19 an hour. I moved to Seattle four years ago with just my cat and a 1998 Nissan Altima filled with all my possessions. Came here for two reasons. I wanted to live more sustainably, and I wanted to get a job. I got the first wish fulfilled rather quickly. A couple of months after I moved here, a 16-year-old driver who just got his license totaled my Porsche. Her name was Valencia. And I've been in the good hands of the King County Metro ever since. The second goal is, it's a work in progress, but I've been able to... But by a bit, I've been able to take advantage of the economic opportunity available here and start to build a career for myself. However, the shortage of affordable housing in Seattle makes these goals harder and harder to achieve. It's hard to take the bus to your home if your job is in a far-fetched suburb, and it's hard to find the time to invest yourself if you're spending three hours a day commuting. I'm holding on, but I know there are people... But I have a lot of privilege, and there are a lot of people who don't, who are holding on that I kind of definitely look up to. I want to call all of you to make Seattle into a more equitable city and make Seattle into a more sustainable city. Please pass MHA in the strongest form. Please reject all amendments that would downzone any part of it. We can't afford to create fewer affordable homes through the MHA program. I also want to call on all of you to go further. I live in a... You know, I live in an apartment that's... We paid $2,000 for the privilege, but, you know, all the electrical wiring is atrocious. We can't run two kitchen appliances at the same time. It's a fire hazard, and if there are cabinets, we're all dead. The workers of Seattle deserve something better than... I'm broken hand-me-downs for its housing. We deserve high-quality social housing. So I call on all of you to lead. Pass this bill and keep focusing on housing. We're going to do a lot more than this. Thank you.
Thank you. 24B is Anna, followed by 24A Iskra, followed by 25B Richard Ellison. Anna.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anna Bonia. I'm with Enterprise Community Partners. We are a national affordable housing nonprofit that is committed to advancing affordable housing because we know that many of the paths to opportunity begin with a quality, stable, safe, and affordable home. And we haven't heard a lot from our affordable housing developers. We've heard a lot of talk about developers, so I'm glad to offer our position here as an organization that works very closely with a lot of affordable housing developers here in the region. And we are concerned by several proposed amendments that would reduce the scale of MHA zoning changes principally in the districts where there are a lot of reductions happening and in areas that are near current or planned high-frequency transit. By reducing the ability to build more housing in those parts of the city, we are effectively closing those areas to lower-income Seattleites that cannot afford to buy or rent in those neighborhoods currently. We need to build more housing and increase affordability in all parts of the city so that all parts of the city are open to everyone. And lastly, we urge the City Council to reconsider the clawback provision or Amendment B6, which would establish intent or steps to reverse added development capacity or regulations if the MHA program is found to be unconstitutional or unlawful. This only works to create a riskier and uncertain development environment for affordable housing developers, making it harder to bring in much-needed affordable housing at the scale that is needed to address our city's housing crisis. Thank you for all of the work you've done so far to bring MHA here today, and we look forward to strong and bold implementation of the most robust MHA possible. Thank you.
Thank you. 24A is Iskra, followed by 25B Richard Ellison, followed by 25A Greg Hill.
Hi, I'm Iskra, and I'm missing my favorite guys who helped design this thing in the beginning. I wish they had showed up, but I'm glad you're here. I am fundamentally very opposed to the MHA. I am very much in favor of affordable housing. I don't think it's the way we're going to get there. I wrote to you all comprehensive letters, including some links to new studies that are very important in Chicago and Vancouver, showing that density is not leading to affordability. It's leading to the opposite. And I see that happening all around me. In every neighborhood where I'm seeing infill, the infill is luxury. It's higher taxed, and the housing is very, very expensive. I mainly want to focus, though, on something that's not being addressed, which is the loss of affordable rentals for businesses. As I look at what's happening on 15th in Ballard, Crown Hill, University District, it's tragic. I'm a small business. I could never start my business in Seattle. I started out in the 12th and Pine Building, a Warren of fabulous, true diversity of every kind of a business you can imagine. Importers, engineers, architects, artists, photographers, video people, all kinds of people. The rent started at $100, and it was for, you know, I don't know, like 10 by 20 space. I left eight years later, my rent was $250. I had to move out of my office a long, long time ago and move into my house. 20% of the housing in Seattle is for rentals, and it's affordable. And that's where a lot of the businesses have gone. As you scrape off all those small businesses on our major arterials and replace them with glossy businesses with no affordable business spaces, there's no place to go, particularly if you take away the houses. Houses are where bands practice. Houses are where culture is made. You cannot have a band practice in a micro apartment. You can't have a cultural city when it's basically filled with housing for corporate workforce. We're bigger than that. We used to have a vision of Seattle as a cultural capital, right? And I don't see it happening with the current MHA zoning. Thank you.
25B is Richard Ellison, followed by 25A Greg Hill, followed by 26B Stephanie Bowman.
Thank you. My name is Richard Ellison. I'm here to support both the tree regulations in the proposed amendments and also in the anti-displacement amendments as proposed by Herbald. I'd like to talk about the idea that maybe Seattle and trees can coexist with new buildings. How do we build denser and still save these big trees? Because the current ordinance does not do that. The current ordinance allows for fees in lieu of mitigation, fees in lieu of saving the trees. So if you're going to remove these big trees, you can do it. The developer says, "Well, look, I'd love to save this big tree, but I'm sorry." So heritage trees are not protected by the City of Seattle. They say, "Well, you should try to save these trees, but please, please, please try to save these trees," but it's not working. Current enforcement is not working. The proposals as such are only for fees in lieu of mitigation for cutting these trees. Director's Rule 16-2008 said, "Hey, here's a tree protection ordinance." It's not being enforced. The mayor, again in 2017, tried to go ahead and make a Director's Rule saying, "Please enforce the tree protection ordinance." Currently, exceptional tree is not protected. What's an exceptional tree? Well, it's a heritage tree as designated by the City of Seattle. It's a rare or exceptional tree by virtue of its size, species, condition, cultural or historic importance, age, or as a grove of trees. None of these are protected. A community can say, "This is the most famous tree. We have been worshipping this tree in our community for years. It's of 30-inch or greater diameter. It has great historic importance." It's not protected. There's no clause in here that says you have to save this tree, or even really try to save this tree. You're allowed merely to pay a fee. This is just an excuse. This is an urban, village, exceptional tree, sacrifice zone bill.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Next up is 25A Greg Hill, followed by 26B Stephanie Bowman, followed by 26A Jessica Westgren.
My name is Greg Hill. I live in Wallingford. I'm in a single-family house in a single-family zone. Initially, it was slated to be upzoned to RSL, but after I spoke out at a hearing, Rob upzoned it to L2. Fortunately, my neighbors, we all got one of these door hangers, which tells how great MHA will be, but neglected to say... which tells how great MHA will be, but neglected to say you'll be surrounded by four-story apartments. So, so far, the neighbors don't really know. It's my fault. Are the upzones needed? Not according to the comp plan. There's plenty of capacity. We've had the largest commercial expansion since World War II, and that's put a lot of pressure on rents. But in the last two years, residential construction has roared back, two biggest years ever. And now rents are starting to stabilize, all without MHA upzones. Similar, the reason this is happening is the super wealthy have decided they want to invest in real estate. And it's a great place to stash cash, good for money laundering, really good deal. MHA scams are coming online in New York, London, Little Rock, all over the place. The charlatans promoting MHA seek to convert housing to a commodity. And we can see how that's going to happen in Seattle because if you reduce the number of single-family houses, obviously, the price of those houses is going to go way up. And if you increase the height in L2, it's no longer available for townhouse construction in an economical way. So you're basically saying, "We need to get rid of families. They're bad. They don't work for the city." More realistically, they don't work as well for the super-rich in their real estate investments. Questions? Why are you intending driving out families? Why are you continuing to deforest the city? Why?
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
26B is Stephanie Bowman, followed by 26A Jessica Westgren, followed by 27B Renee. Can't make out your last name, but you're 27B.
Great. Good evening, council members. Stephanie Bowman, I'm a Beacon Hill resident for the last 13 years. I'm also a former board member for Plymouth Housing Group, and I led the port to welcome a tiny home village for the homeless. So I absolutely support more affordable housing and density in the city of Seattle. However, I'm here to testify about the overly broad citywide upzone being a blunt instrument and the wrong approach, particularly for Beacon Hill, the most diverse neighborhood in this city. Beacon Hill has two major employers, the VA and PACMed, which now has Seattle College's nursing program in it. We also have the wonderful Ossana Del Rosso Housing Development, which has over 200 units of affordable housing. However, since those three projects have expanded over the last two years, we now have mile-long backups, five days a week, on 15th Avenue and on Spokane Street. Residents literally cannot turn onto their road. Kids are waiting for 10, 15 minutes just to be able to cross the street. This is what's called concurrency. We don't have concurrency in Beacon Hill. We very much want to welcome more residents into the neighborhood. We, again, believe in density, but we're here to implore you to take a more surgical approach. Let our urban village fill in before you expand it even more. We literally don't have the infrastructure to be able to handle it. We would like to be able to, but we need you to take a more reasonable approach. Thank you again for your service.
26A is Jessica, followed by 27B Renee, followed by 27A Gordon Hagerty. Jessica.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jessica. I'm from Welcoming, Wallingford, and I'm here to speak in favor of MHA. I'm also here to state that I do not agree with any of the amendments that recommend downzoning. Seattle is a progressive city, or at least I thought. But after all of this process, it seems to me that Seattle is liberal only up until we have to make room in our personal lives and communities for others. It's no secret that where you live determines your access to income, education, and transportation. Seattle is facing an ever-growing chasm between the haves and the have-nots. Increasing people's access to areas of opportunity should be the first thing in our minds. Equity to housing is important for marginalized groups. But here I am seeing proposed downzones in our most affluent neighborhoods. Seattle should be breaking down neighborhood segregation and working towards eliminating institutional acts of discrimination. And one of the steps to do this is to lift the ban on apartments in our urban villages. Let's talk equity. Wallingford is transit-rich. We have great schools, wonderful parks, and we should be open to sharing this opportunity with as many people as possible. My neighborhood council has become famous for their opposition in Hala. We have those infamous orange signs. I've attempted to work with my neighborhood council and have conversations about Hala and MHA. I'm a renter. I've been attending the WCC meetings for a couple of years now. And often, I'm the only renter in the room. The general demographics are white, single-family homeowners, many of whom are over the age of 50. Why is this a problem? 40% of our neighborhood units are single-family homes and 60% are made up of apartments, condos, and townhomes. So why am I the only renter in these community meetings? With these demographics, is it really accurate for my community council to claim they represent the neighborhood voice? And they entered into the scale appeal without hosting a vote or asking any of us if we wanted to join. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Jessica. 27B is Renee, followed by 27A Gordon Hagerty, followed by 28B Riley. Either Low or Love. Either way, it's a cool last name. Renee.
Council members, thank you for your time. I'm a Seattle native. I grew up in the North Side. And I was motivated to come here and get involved because of the issue of racial and economic injustice. And I came here prepared to give full support of MHA. But then we heard from Ms. Ruby Holland in the green shirt, who came out with strong discomfort about certain aspects of MHA. So if she feels that way, I do as well. I do think it's time for some of our historically white neighborhoods to do their part to absorb the population growth in Seattle because the Central District already has done its part when it comes to density development and building out of the light rail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee. 27A is Gordon Hagerty, followed by 28B Riley, followed by 28A David Held.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Hagerty. Thank you for being here and taking our input. I want to focus on the last word of the MHA title tonight, affordability. I own property in Seattle and I've seen my taxes more than double over the past 10 years. Not because I've done anything extra to improve the property, but just because of rising property values. Your MHA proposal includes upzoning a substantial number of single-family properties. If the MHA upzone goes through, every one of those single-family properties will experience an increase in property taxes. Not because their home has become any more valuable, but because of the land that is under it. As soon as developers start to buy into the neighborhood, every property will be revalued to those comparable highest and best values. And every working family, no matter what their income level or social status, will be paying more. Higher property tax bills for the homeowners and the renters translates into a windfall for the city. But that could spell eviction notice for those already struggling to stay in their homes. I'm asking, how does this not constitute a land grab by the city and the developers waiting to swoop in and buy up their properties? It's already happening, and it's only going to get worse. You need to seriously reconsider your property tax valuation process. I understand that you need to increase housing density to be able to accommodate the influx of people in a growing economy. And that you want to mitigate housing cost pressures caused by competition over a limited housing supply. If that's what you're trying to do, then why not call your proposed ordinance what it really is, a mandatory housing density ordinance? I think this ill-advised proposal needs to go back to the drawing board for a little more work.
Thank you, Gordon. Next up is 28B Riley, followed by 28A David Held. Riley, 28B. Going once, going twice. 28A, David.
Howdy-do.
Hi.
My name's David Heldie. I work as a housing assistance case manager for DESE down in their main shelter. I've worked for them for about three and a half years. And low-income housing is just, there's not nearly enough of it in this city. Somebody from Bellwether Housing was here earlier. I sometimes, when I have an extra moment, just go on their website and just longingly browse. Because they never have openings. The people that I'm trying to get into housing are just out of luck. It's incredibly difficult to do my job. It's incredibly difficult to stay motivated to do my job because it doesn't matter how well I know the system. It doesn't matter how hard I try. It doesn't matter how hard my client tries. If they get housed, it's dumb luck. I basically have nothing to do with it. And it's simply because there is not enough housing. We need more. That's completely ignoring the fact that a ton of my coworkers live in exactly the same housing that my clients are trying to get into. Those are the lucky ones that are able to get into housing nearby, not the ones that are living way up in Everett or way down in Tacoma, Federal Way, and trying to commute to this incredibly stressful job. We just need more housing. It's, it just needs to happen.
Thank you, David. All right, next up, we have 29B Anne Marie Low, followed by 29A Rhonda Bush, followed by 30B Calvin Jones. Anne Marie?
Hi there. My name is Anne Marie Low, a longtime Capitol Hill resident in 14 years in Madison Miller Urban Village. I've read and studied the MHA and Hala documentation and absolutely support the goal of building more low-income housing. I do also note that the wealthier neighborhoods of Laurelhurst, Madison Park, and Leschi are not impacted by this legislation. The red line that runs in front of my house is still very alive today in 2019. I've actively engaged my neighbors in the Madison Miller Urban Village and walked the proposed zoning changes block by block. The Mad Miller Urban Village has terrific diversity in race, age, sexual orientation, and occupation, including teachers, health workers, and government employees. Many of the lower-income neighbors, many of the people I just mentioned, live in existing shared housing, mother-in-law units, basement apartments, and ADUs, auxiliary dwelling units. This is in stark contrast to the new development of $2,800 and $3,500 a month apartments and $500,000 condos that are being built in my neighborhood. The plans for upzoning in the Madison Miller Urban Village and in many other urban villages will displace the existing low- and middle-income residents, the residents I just mentioned. The housing that exists in mother-in-law apartments, ADUs, and shared housing is not counted in any of the studies that you've done. It's not considered by MHA and Hala at all. We're at risk of very high displacement in my neighborhood and many others because these units have not been counted. I invite you to revisit some of the details and specifically the information I'll leave with you about the Madison Miller.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Next up is 29A Rhonda Bush, followed by 30B Calvin Jones, followed by 30A Bonnie Williams.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Bush. I'm from the cherished neighborhood of Wallingford. The National Trust for Historic Preservation has stated that old places are critical to people's sense of who they are, their capacity to find meaning in their lives, and to envision a future. We look across our city at Pioneer Square, Pike Place Market, and the Arboretum. These are places that were once threatened by destruction by city leaders and developers until the people of Seattle demanded that they be preserved for the future. And now the historic fabric of Wallingford and many other urban villages are under attack. Affordable housing and historic preservation are not mutually exclusive. In fact, they go very much hand in hand. And as a candidate, Jenny Durkin made these statements in a survey to Historic Seattle. "Not every neighborhood is the same, nor should every neighborhood necessarily add density in the same way. There should not be a one-size-fits-all approach to rezoning and upzoning. And planning for this added density requires intensive, interactive discussions with the neighborhood leaders, businesses, and residents." The city has failed to follow up to date with these words. And Wallingford is a historic district in need of an official designation. Wallingford is anchored by seven large landmark structures and has one of the best examples of early-century architecture, as you can see in this chart. And yet, with the proposed zone changes, Wallingford is scheduled for a 95% to 107% projected growth, with the average for all UVs is 38% to 39%. All zone tiers are M, M1, and M2, exposing the historic resources of Wallingford to significant impact and change of scale. This does not reflect the voice of nearly 30 residents who attended Rob Johnson's design workshop in 2017. So I ask you to consider the words of the mayor. And historic preservation and affordable housing need to go hand in hand and require legitimate planning with neighborhoods to prepare for more density while maintaining the historic fabric that gives Wallingford its special sense of place.
30B is Calvin Jones, followed by 30A Bonnie Williams, followed by 31B Dawn Cave.
Hi, my name is Calvin Jones and I'm a renter in Madison Valley and an organizer for Tech for Housing. I'm here to support the passage of MHA in its strongest possible form. I'm lucky enough to afford to rent a three-bedroom apartment in Madison Valley. And my favorite part about the neighborhood is that there's a decent amount of housing that creates a lot of room for neighbors. So my next-door neighbor taught me how to garden, which is no easy task. And my neighbor's two children are probably the only two people in the world who think my roommates and I are cool. The, not all of my friends are as lucky as I am because housing is really expensive, especially for our generation. Zoning is a generational issue. And when 70% of the city is zoned for the most expensive type of housing and the least environmentally friendly type of housing, that creates huge problems for young people. Not only will we not be able to afford, maybe ever, to buy homes in the city, but it's contributing to emissions that will drive climate change that my generation will mainly bear the burden of. I think in order to deal with this, we have to pass MHA as quickly as possible. And then we have to take a very hard look at the cities' single-family zoning laws. I deeply believe that it's time to legalize more types of housing on all of Seattle. Thank you.
Okay, next up is 30A Bonnie Williams. And after Bonnie, we have approximately...
Let's see the news. Are you ready?
We have about 80 folks left signed up, times two. 160 minutes.
Do some math.
That's close to three hours. So I'm committed until the very end, as long as you all are going to hang out with me. So 30A Ms. Williams, followed by 31B Dawn Cave, followed by 31A Andy Katz. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. I live in Wallingford. And my feeling is that MHA is flawed legislation. And creating 6,000 units has a very high environmental impact on neighborhoods when every lot is built to the max. Yards, trees, open space, historic buildings disappear along with sunlight. The MHA legislation remains loyal to the grand bargain parameters. A Clawback Provision is necessary, so I would support B6. I believe that elected district councilmen should listen to and represent their districts. I am from District 4 and live in Wallingford, as I said. At the February 8 meeting, I was cheering silently to hear district council people defend their views on zoning reductions, going from Low Rise 1 to RSL because they listen to their tax-paying constituents. Other at-large council members pretty much opposed any RSL concessions for neighborhoods. So here we are at the 11th hour with MHA and comp plan amendments and still suspense about whether there is any flexibility in the MHA grand bargain to actually give some relief to neighborhoods. If we had effective neighborhood planning, we would know by now what each urban village zoning map would look like. I support the map...
I support the maps that appeared for Wallingford, 415, 417, 418, and possibly West Wallingford, East Fremont. This would give a tremendous amount of mitigation to the neighborhood, which has a 95% growth target, which is extremely high. We are, of course, concerned about the historic properties and landmarks in the neighborhood. I cannot vote for this MHA package as I could be displacing myself along with my neighbors by supporting it. I strongly oppose any amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, your time is up.
Thank you.
31B is Dawn, followed by 31A Andy Katz, followed by 32B Ben Plotke.
Hi. I was going to say some boring things about some of the amendments, but I heard that guy from Vulcan come up here and talk about how the building trade is going to be out of business unless there is upzones. And I just wondered if anybody else who's here from the building trade with a story like that, could they explain, are they sitting around playing cards and learning to play the ukulele and stuff? Or are they not, actually in the middle of one of the biggest building booms in history, like notable around the world? Could you actually build more housing if you had upzones? I mean, I'm not saying that there's no problem. There's a problem, but upzones aren't going to solve that problem because it's not a zoning problem. So to the amendments, well, I should also say, you know, look where they're upzoning. They call these things high-opportunity areas, but actually, the people who came to talk to us about that couldn't really give us a coherent explanation of what kind of opportunities you get by appearing in one of these neighborhoods. It turns out that actually, they're the high-cost neighborhoods, the places where the developers are going to be able to sell their developments for the highest penny. And I think that's probably something that people aren't really thinking about too much. Anyway, the amendments, what a can of worms, huh? You've heard a little bit about the tree ordinance. It was supposed to be a separate thing. It's kind of controversial. It got sort of put on the back burner. And now it kind of gets slipped in in the stack of MHA amendments. Parts of it, it's based on canopy coverage, tree coverage, canopy. And the Urban Forestry Commission is actually on record as opposing that. It's probably good for just a whole nother hearing on its own.
Thank you, Dawn. 31A is Andy Katz, followed by 32B Ben Plotke, followed by 32A Tieran Martin.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. And thanks for sticking it out, and thanks to your staff and all the advocates who are here tonight. I'm coming pretty much a phasic right now. I'm going to slow it down. It's been a long day, and you're going to hear from plenty of middle-aged white dudes. I'm going to keep it going. So I strongly support passing MHA as quickly as possible. It's been a long run. It's four years. Let's get this done and move on to bigger and better things in the Hala agenda. I'd like to defer or just reject the amendments for Districts 1, 2, 4, and 6. This is a last-minute attempt to water down a miniscule amount of legislation that affects 6% of single-family zones. Let's move past this and negotiate those issues elsewhere. I was going to address the talk of environmentalism. I think I'm not going to do a better job than the Sierra Club did. But each single-family home in Seattle needed trees to be cut down for it, right? There's one set of rules for folks who got here first and another set of rules who got here later. We can talk about the environmental impact of sprawl. We can talk about the social determinants of health, the impact on health, opportunity to jobs, access to good schools, that come with proximity to these amenities and benefits. And adding missing middle housing is a fair way of doing that. And MHA is not perfect, but it's what we have in front of us, and it's a good start. And I urge you to pass it without delay. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. 32B is Ben. 32A is Tieran Martin. 33B is Corey Crocker. Ben?
Hello, I'm Ben Plotke. I'm overcoming my fear of public speaking because I believe MHA is extremely important. I know we're all here because we care deeply about Seattle. I first moved here in '99, but since then, I've had the opportunity to live in a lot of different places, and I'd like to share some of my experiences with that. So one place I lived was in Brooklyn. My parents are Orthodox Jews, and Brooklyn, it gave me an experience of families living in dense apartments. I saw little shops, bakeries, fish stores. People would walk to their local stores, and having a car was the exception rather than the rule. Later, I lived for a year even in Jerusalem, and there I saw every single neighborhood had a little playground where kids could play. So it was amazingly kid-friendly. Since then, I've also had the opportunity to visit many cities in Europe, and some of these are astoundingly beautiful, and there's no setbacks. So I just want to say that maybe instead of fighting density, we should be looking to improve density. Density is necessary if we're going to house the influx of people. So let's try and make it good density rather than arguing about whether it's going to happen or not. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ben. And I think you handled that public speaking just fine. So thank you. 32A is Tieran. 33B is Corey Crocker. And 33A is Sonia Lyris.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tieran Martin. I sincerely thank you for your service on this long Thursday night. So I'm a resident of Seattle's 2nd Council District, but tonight I'm here speaking to you in my role as a data analyst and program manager at Futurewise. For those who don't know us, Futurewise is a nonprofit environmental planning organization. For the past 29 years, we have worked across Washington State to prevent sprawl and promote sustainable, equitable growth under the framework of our state's Growth Management Act. Tonight, I urge the council to seize this opportunity to pass mandatory housing affordability citywide in its most expedient, legally robust, and housing-productive form. The rapid economic growth witnessed by our city and region has forced many of our neighbors to bear a burden that is both unjust and unsustainable. The Director's Report on the NHA Citywide Policy states a very sobering statistic. Right now, there are over 45,000 Seattle households who, if they want to stay in this city, are forced to spend 50% or more of their income on housing. That figure, which doesn't even include those who have been pushed into homelessness, should motivate us all to act. Our supply of stable, affordable homes is inadequate. And if we want to fix that, we need to implement a policy that does three things. We need more homes that are built quickly and affordably. We need a reliable funding source for those homes. And we need to put them near transit, schools, shops, parks, and all the other foundations of urban neighborhood life. I encourage you to look at your fellow legislators down in Olympia, who are right now fighting for some pro-housing bills that are progressive and bold. And I encourage you to continue the tradition of leadership that Seattle has played. Pass MHA citywide in its most robust, pro-housing form, and pass it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. 33B is Corey. 33A is Sonia Lyris. And 34B is Leo Brennan.
Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you very much for staying. My name is Corey Crocker, and I'm a small-business owner and a 30-year resident of the U District. Many of us welcome increased density. Approved two years ago, the first U District rezone brought high-rise development to an area at high risk of displacement. We were the first neighborhood to require affordable housing through the MHA program. Missing, however, are the concurrent benefits promised citizens by the Growth Management Act. One benefit that we already have and one that we risk losing with the second rezone of the U District are unique small businesses along University Way Northeast. Allow me to put their concerns into perspective proportionally. The existing height on the Ave is about 17 feet, as I can see with my phone. The current zoning of the Ave is about 65 feet. The upzoned buildings, the height of the buildings immediately across the alley from the Ave is 320 feet, so from the ground to my height. You can imagine the height and the risk to these small businesses. It's already impacting them along the Ave. A majority of them are owned by women or people of color, are small, and eligible for legacy business status, some of which we have already lost or risk losing too soon. We have a special case along the Ave, a prime candidate for a historic district, and it deserves preservation. Please help us to save the Ave by keeping it out of the second upzone of our neighborhood. Again, we've already given significantly to MHA, and we welcome new residents. Join the rally to save the Ave this Monday from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Big Time Brewery in the U District, and sign our petition online at savetheave.org. We've brewed a special brew, Save the Ave Ale. Come and take a taste. See you on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. 33A is Sonia Lyris. Sonia's gone. 34B is Leo Brennan. 34A is Joe Wall. And 35B is Denise Durr. Are you Leo?
Hello, yes.
Please.
Yeah, my name is Leo Brennan. We have a house there in the Roosevelt neighborhood in Seattle.
Mr. Brennan, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a house there in the Roosevelt neighborhood, just south of the new light rail station. And it is presently single-family zoning at the moment, and it will be getting, I guess, abzonked from LR1 or LR2, which we're quite happy about that. However, we are adjacent to a commercial property that, which is basically that whole block is getting abzonked to NC 75. And we feel that this step is too much compared to what we would be. There are probably a few single-family properties in that same block, and we would encourage the city council to, I guess you can't do it this time, but in future, to maybe try and make that zoning the whole block, NC 75 or whatever, and make the whole block the same zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is 34A Joe Wall, followed by 35B Denise Durr, followed by 35A Bart Seema.
Thank you, councilmembers, for putting in the time to hear people speak on this issue. I am not in favor of upzoning as a solution to our housing problems in Seattle. And let me explain where I'm coming from. I've lived here since 1960, and expansion of rental property and condominiums over that course of time has not really lowered rents or made single-family homes more affordable or lowered tax burdens. Hand in hand with every building boom we've gone through, things have gone up. I've heard discussion of supply and demand. The problem is that the supply is controlled by people with the money, willing to invest and lend on a project. I am having a hard time envisioning developers and banks and investment companies in New York deciding, yeah, sure, let's overbuild Seattle so we lose money. I don't think it's going to happen. And for people who are renters, if you ever aspire to own a single-family home, we need to leave a few of them around. If you are in Seattle now, you drive around and you see the land use signs, they're commonplace. The houses are under threat of extinction. So if you want to be a lifetime renter and never own a home in Seattle, get behind MHA because it's the thing to keep you renting for the rest of your life. A couple of other things I want to mention. We have these things called Interstate 90 and 520. They go a long way out into the sticks. That's where you could throw Seattle on the fire, tear all the single-family homes down, and then people will be driving 60 miles to them. They're living in North Bend already. It's just going to keep pushing it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
35B is Denise. 35A is Bart. And 36B is Linda Cale.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Denise Durr. I'd like to thank the city council for listening tonight. It's hard to understand how the MHA process turned into such a special-interest bloodbath. Virtually everyone supports creating affordable housing, but the real issue has always been how. Simply amping up gentrification to fund subsidized apartments isn't good enough. The delays and dysfunction of this well-intended plan are a direct result of dismissing authentic neighborhood participation in its earliest development. An equitable result requires an equitable process. Going forward, we need a way to nurture and maintain a civil dialogue with our city council representatives, a dialogue to build consensus based on pragmatism and respect. We need neighborhood outreach centers, a brick-and-mortar destination location in each of Seattle's seven council districts, an office accessible and responsive to the governmental needs of each unique neighborhood. Solving complex problems requires a relationship with citizens and their representatives. We need an actual place to create and sustain a desired evolution of our neighborhoods. I would like to conclude by acknowledging my support of Councilmember Herbald's anti-displacement proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. 35A is Bart. 36B is Linda Cale. 36A is Chris Hubbard. And again, as I call your name, please make your way to your designated podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, let me express my deep appreciation and full support...
Sorry about that.
...and full support to the council for taking on this important effort to increase affordable housing in Seattle, and to all the citizens around me today who have taken a lot of time out of their busy lives to provide input into the process. My name is Bart Seema, and I'm a resident of District 4. I also have the privilege of serving on the Board of Directors for Bellwether Housing. Bellwether Housing develops and manages homes for people with limited incomes near job centers, transit, schools, and services. We currently manage over 2,000 affordable units with another thousand in the development process. But my day job is a traffic engineer. I spent 45 years working to make it easier to travel from work at home to school than other opportunities offered by this community. I could certainly spend another 45 years addressing our transportation challenges. Lots of work to be done in this area. However, a root cause of traffic congestion is the inability to find affordable housing near these desired destinations. The lack of affordable housing pushes families farther out from the city. It increases their commute times and travel costs. This has lost time that could be spent on more productive activities than sitting in traffic. And lower density does not effectively support transit service. The crying need for more affordable housing alone calls for the passage of MHA. Potential transportation benefits just add another reason. It's time to pass MHA so that families of all walks of life can live close to the amenities and opportunities that Seattle offers. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Okay, 36B is Linda, followed by 36A Chris Hubbard, followed by 37B Scott Bonjour.
My name is Linda Cahill. I live in the Roosevelt area, Section 4 or District 4, and I live in the very northwest corner of it. So we are bordered by I-5, the Lake City off-ramp of I-5 and Roosevelt Avenue. So we have a little pocket neighborhood. It is my beloved neighborhood and my support system. And I'm here to say that the upzoning that has been happening as part of the urban village, Roosevelt now has a nice light rail station getting ready to be functional. We have this urban village, all of which were good, at least good in the increased density and the increased pollution due to traffic. What isn't so good is my little pocket neighborhood is kind of pushing the boundaries. They've kind of gone overboard. The housing that's being built in the light rail area has been just chaotically, rampantly taking place, and now they want more, more, and more. And they're going into these neighborhoods, so I'm about to become an extinct, single-family property owner. I'm an urban farmer. I grow tomatoes. I've lived there 28 years, and Roosevelt was a very affordable place to move. When I moved there in '91, and the property values have almost tripled since I've been there, I actually thought I'd just be taxed out of my... there, I actually thought I'd just be taxed out of my house, and I still may be. But I'm really going to be zoned out of my house. And I wanted to be, I was randomly assigned LR1, so now I can't build my little mother-in-law in the backyard. I have trees and flowers and vegetables everywhere and would have been a nice little location for a little supplemental house like that. But, and my 50 houses in my Little Pocket neighborhood are mostly young families. And there's not going to be any room for anybody. I can't afford to live there.
Thank you, Linda.
I'm due for an appartment, I think.
Thank you, Linda. 36A is Chris, followed by 37B Scott, followed by 37A Karen Wren.
Hi. My name is Chris Hubbard. I live on the border between the U District and Roosevelt. I've been there 16 years. I live in an old, 100-year-old, not particularly nice craftsman, but it's got character, so I like it. I came in here tonight, a lifelong liberal, thinking I was pro-density, pro-housing. And I have to say, after listening to half these people talk, I feel like I'm an elitist bourgeois nimby because I live in a house, God forbid. You know, I bought it 16 years ago, and if it makes you feel any better, I can't afford to get out of it because I can't afford to move anywhere else. But it's a house, and I apologize for that. But I would like to say, on behalf of people in my unfortunate situation of living in a house, especially one that has historical character, is that I would like you to consider the need for historical preservation in addition to the need for more housing. I don't see those as mutually exclusive. I said I live near U District and Roosevelt. There's gobs of areas where we can build a lot of housing in there, in places where it makes sense. We don't have to sacrifice the historic district there or Mount Baker to just bulldoze it and put up apartments. That's ridiculous. So I live in a really old house. It takes a lot of maintenance. Sometimes I feel like I'm just the caretaker, and I really am. Eventually, I'll sell it to some other family who will live there and continue the generations of families that have lived in there and come back and take tours and all that. And you guys, as city council, please, in the interest of improving the housing situation, don't avoid the caretaker role and open the door to destroying the history that has made some of our neighborhoods special. It's not required. You won't gain much by doing it, and you risk losing a lot of the historic character that makes these areas special. So I'll get off of the, I'll get out of my house so that I'm no longer a threat to society.
37B is Scott, followed by 37A Karen Wren, followed by 38B Tin Louis.
Thank you, council, for your perseverance tonight and hosting this hearing. I'm Scott Bonjukian, and I'm a Seattle renter. And contrary to some of what we've heard tonight, it doesn't matter how long I've lived here. I'm speaking in support of the MHA program in maximizing the production of affordable housing. I'm glad to see the proposed upzones in my District 3 neighborhood have stayed intact relatively. I welcome more neighbors with open arms. I'm lucky to afford a one-bedroom apartment by myself and someday would like to own a home and raise a family in the city. But with our rapid price increases, I don't see a pathway to that without policies like MHA. Seattle needs many more family-sized options like townhouses, duplexes, cottages, condos, and multi-bedroom apartments. A million-dollar, single-family home is not the only place it's possible to have a family. More options need to be available in all of our neighborhoods so people have choice in where they live relative to work, shopping, parks, schools, and transit. Some are worried that the affordability requirements of this policy aren't higher or that the upzones aren't larger, or that we haven't had enough process and debate. The fact is, we've talked about this for long enough, and MHA has been shaped into a modest yet robust program. It's the least we can do to help regular folks stay in our increasingly expensive city and reduce their carbon footprints. Let's approve the MHA program in a hole and as quickly as possible to help us build a more connected, sustainable, and equitable Seattle. Thank you.
37A is Karen. 38B is Tin Louis. 38A is Laura Low Bernstein.
Hi. Thank you very much for persevering and staying with us this whole night. This is a very long process. We've been looking at it engaged with you for about four years, and it's been a long, long haul. I would actually like to speak very specifically in support of amendments 44A and 44B. The Roosevelt neighborhood has been a strong proponent of increased density in our urban core. We have worked long and hard toward this end. We have been asking for and support upzoning and affordable housing in our urban core. But it is also vital that we preserve and protect the features that make Roosevelt an exceptional neighborhood to live in. We want that preserved for those people that we hope to welcome in our urban core. The historic district of Ravenna Cowan Park abuts the Roosevelt Urban Village. We heard from a gentleman earlier pretty forcefully saying that any amendment would be a loss. However, if you do not include amendments 44A and 44B, and those honestly protecting the other national historic districts, I know these neighborhoods, these amendments, protect 100-year-old neighborhoods. These homes did not magically appear in a day. They took time to develop and grow. And we need to support the maintaining of them. You may not know Ravenna Cowan Park, which abuts the area that is the historic district, used to be full of old-growth trees, 400-year-old trees that we go out to the Olympic National Park to see, right? Those trees were bought by the city. They were cut down for, sold for cords of firewood, and they're gone. So without taking this measure and adopting these amendments, you risk this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, once-in-a-generation opportunity that another speaker spoke to, to really take action towards affordable density, but also protecting that historic nature.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
38B is Tin Louis. 38A is Laura. 39B is, ugh, something Bates. 39B. What is it? Okay, sorry. There you are. Something Bates. Okay. 38B, Tin. Okay. We will move on to 38A, Laura.
I'm not Laura, but I'm Katie Reichardt, and she passed me her card.
All right.
So first of all.
Are you somewhere else on the list?
I was 50A, I believe.
Okay.
So I guess I'm now 38A.
You were Katie.
Reichardt.
Okay. I will strike you out of 50.
Thank you.
One less person.
Exactly. So thanks to everyone in this room using their civic duty, and thank you to our council members for being here so late. I really appreciate it. My name's Katie Reichardt, and I'm a renter in District 4. I'm also an academic student employee and proud member of UAW 4121. As a renter in District 4, I've actually found that my life has changed dramatically for the better since I've gotten to live near where I work. I have a 10-minute bike commute. The first three years I lived here, I had a 45-minute commute, two buses, and I actually would drive to Wallingford and Park. Sorry, Wallingford people for parking on your street because of the anxiety of getting to work. And I got lucky. I trolled Craigslist for days and days and days to find an apartment I could live. I make half of the median income in my district, and it took so long to find a place to live. And most of my colleagues are not so lucky. So I also want to speak on behalf of one of my colleagues, Emily Myers, who isn't able to be here tonight. She is also a renter in District 4, but she is highly rent-burdened. She is an academic student employee at the University of Washington and a leader in our labor union. And she, like many of my peers, has experienced threats of eviction and has experienced being forced to choose between paying for internet, paying for rent, and paying for food. So she isn't able to afford internet to do her research, and she has to stay at work until the late hours of the night and sometimes the early morning. In many ways, she's lucky compared to our other employees at our university who have to take express buses that only run during certain hours of the day, drive, putting fossil fuels in the air. All of this points to there are low-wage workers at the University of Washington and low-income students who cannot afford to get an education. We hear every single day of undergrads dropping out because they can't afford rent in the district, and we need housing. So both myself and Emily strongly oppose any amendments that would affect District 4 upzones to reduce the number of affordable units available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So 39B. There you are. 39B, followed by 39A Doug Holtham, followed by 40B Bridget Dotson.
My name is Tony Bates, and I'm from East Fremont in District 4. I appreciate the amendments proposed to MHA as mitigations. Though my neighbors could not be here, we support Amendment 14, or 4-16 in particular, which substitutes residential small lot in place of some low-rise. Residential small lot adds diversity to housing types and helps retain green space. As proposed, this amendment, 4-16, has little impact on density goals. Adjacent parcels have been zoned differently to compensate, essentially shifting the density in response to public input. Amendment 416 allows us to preserve diverse affordable housing where many families, seniors, and people of diverse descent live. It provides needed variation in building type, space for an occasional tree, and support for smaller landlords, not just corporate landlords. We have over 30 letters of support here, okay, from renters and owners, which have been sent to Rob Johnson's office in recent weeks, all support Amendment 4-16 and the minor modification it makes. We thank Rob for working with us to achieve density and zoning that's a better fit for our neighborhood, and we encourage other council to also show support for such amendments that Rob has the letters. In addition, I'd like to show support for improved tree protection, retaining exceptional trees, creating a permit system to track medium-sized trees, and enforcing regulations to protect trees. And also to find a method to create setbacks which allow us to continue to grow trees. Housing's important. Rural green space is important. Urban forest is also critical. You have to get that equation right to have good density. You need space for people and space for trees to reach your climate goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next up is 39A Doug Holtham, followed by 40B Bridget Dotson, and then we have 48A Jessica Dixon.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for listening and persevering through all of this. My name's Doug Holtham, and I work for the First Hill Improvement Association. You've heard my spiel before, so I'll make it quick. The First Hill Improvement Association works to ensure that First Hill is a neighborhood where everyone can thrive. I'd like to thank Councilmember Bagshaw for introducing an amendment to continue incentive zoning in First Hill's high-rise zones. The First Hill Improvement Association is in support of MHA. And for a little perspective, our upzones are 110 feet, not townhomes. So keep it in perspective, and we are in support. I urge all council members to support incentive zoning as proposed by Councilmember Bagshaw, to give us the tools to build our desperately needed open spaces, to enhance our lush tree canopy through green street improvements, and allow for historic preservation as a financially sustainable option for historic properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. 40B is Bridget Dotson, followed by 48A Jessica Dixon. And then we will hear from 41B Gregory Flood.
My name is Bridget Dotson. Very nervous, but I think this is important. I'm here to voice my support for MHA. I have lived in the Fremont-Wallingford neighborhood for 15 years. I'm privileged enough to own my home. I have been disappointed over the years to notice that during my employment history in the food service industry in my own neighborhood, my fellow coworkers increasingly could not afford to live near where they worked. I often observed coworkers moving to far-off suburbs with low transit access, forcing them to also commute by car. We need support for increased density in our neighborhoods now. In fact, we needed it 15 years ago. We have a moral obligation to welcome all different types of people to live in our neighborhoods, especially those who also serve our communities. We have a moral obligation to work to undo the harm done to our communities by our racist history of redlining. We must do more. I wish MHA did not include an option for developers to pay into a fund instead of building affordable housing in neighborhoods with high access to opportunity like mine. It only perpetuates the cycle of discrimination. Seattle's history of redlining is well-known, and we are obligated to break the cycle, not continue it. I wish that was different, but I think this is a start, and we need to do it now. If we will not support density in our neighborhoods, we might as well own up to our arrogance and privilege and build a physical wall around Seattle to explicitly dictate who can and cannot live here, because we have already been doing that for many years. I urge you, city council, to represent me and the many like me who want to welcome many types of people to our neighborhoods. Please do not be swayed by the louder and more privileged voices of smaller communities who wish to keep our virtual wall in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Okay. We have 48A is Jessica Dixon, followed by 41B Gregory Flood, and then 41A Linda Corbus. And we have, I think, 10, 20, 30. I think we have about 10, 20, 30, 40. About 62 folks left. So Jessica Dixon.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for being here tonight. I am a 30-year resident of the city of Seattle. And I'm here to talk about the tree ordinance, or the trees. As the climate warms, Seattle will increasingly experience the heat island effect during the summer months. This is when the average mean temperature of an urban area, which is predominantly buildings and streets, is between 5 and 25 degrees hotter than the neighboring, less-developed areas. Heat islands affect communities by increasing energy demand, air pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions, and they result in heat-related illnesses, including respiratory difficulties, exhaustion, heat stroke, and heat-related mortality. Cities across the country and across the world are realizing the value of trees, believe it or not, and green spaces, in attenuating the heat island effect. In fact, report after report, trees and vegetation are listed first as a strategy to combat this problem. Developers anticipating MHA upzoning are rolling out their plans and projects now. And every day, and Seattle's big trees are in their way. I support the updates to the tree ordinance and, in particular, the provisions in Section 5 of the council resolution, specifically retaining provisions for exceptional trees and expanding the definition of exceptional trees, creating a permit process for the removal of significant trees defined at 6 inches in diameter, and adding replacement requirement for significant tree removal and tracking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. 41B is Gregory Flood, followed by 41A Linda Corbus, followed by 42B Megan Cruz.
Good evening. My name's Greg Flood. I wish this was a city coming to my neighborhood to partner with us on MHA, but it is not, and that is sad. I've lived in Seattle 40 years. I feel I've been a good citizen, leading improvements in my community, raising a family, attending public schools, and I hope my kids can own a home here one day. I was sickened when Mayor Murray and council disbanded the community councils resorting to false rhetoric that pitted neighbor against neighbor and renter against homeowner. But I guess no one expects the Spanish Inquisition. Welcome to governance in the age of Trump when our leaders savaged the constituents with false data intended to mislead and frighten. The sad part is that this long process could likely be complete by now had a less adversarial approach been adopted. I'd like to put to rest the repeated false claim that MHA will remedy past issues of economic covenants or redlining. This map, created jointly by King County and Seattle, looked at each parcel in the city of Seattle and placed a tiny green speck for any parcel that imposed covenants or redlining. Take a close look. Note that not one of the areas that actually impose covenants will see one iota of MHA other than Capitol Hill. I fear that we, as a city, will regret this legislation as our smaller, most affordable starter homes, which used to get sold to other starter families, will now be intercepted by high-profit development firms, empowered under MHA and torn down, creating waste and harm to the environment. MHA will reduce access by average citizens to Seattle's older, most affordable ownership opportunity. 85% of millennials wish to own their home, but there'll be fewer starter homes under MHA. Seattle has an abundance of rentals. According to the Seattle Times, 10% of rentals citywide are vacant, 20% vacant downtown. Rents are starting to stabilize. MHA should instead focus on how to increase ownership opportunity.
Thank you, Gregory.
Thank you.
41A is Linda. 41A is 42B Megan Cruz, followed by 42A 41A is 42B Megan Cruz, followed by 42A Ryan DeRamo. Linda.
Hi there, and thanks for sticking it out here. I'm Linda Corbus. I've been living in Seattle for 40 years. Wallingford, back in the 90s, became a residential urban village. That means it has a lot of residents. It's not a urban hub. It's not an urban center. So the proposed upzones will affect 700 single-family homes. The MHA will encourage developers to buy up those small beginner homes and replace it with an 18-unit, small unit apartment building with no parking on streets that already have an RPZ. Sounds like a good plan? I don't think so. And in fact, it's going to decrease the stock of single-family homes for ownership. So all those folks that want to own homes won't get one. Upzoning 700 single-family homes should be a huge red flag. I'm sure there are ways to revise the proposal to obtain the density that the city wants. And I'm totally for more density. In fact, Wallingford has plenty of density capacity in its current zoning, but let's not go there. So what I'm saying is residential urban villages should not be treated the same as urban hubs and urban centers. Please vote no on the MHA. Thank you.
Thank you. 42B is Megan Cruz, followed by 42A Ryan DeRamo, followed by 43B Laura Swift.
Thank you. I'm Megan Cruz. I live downtown in a 1912 city landmark on a block of historic and other landmark buildings. Our block is about to be overtaken by a luxury development with two towers standing side by side. One is 50 stories tall, and the other is 16 stories tall. Neither has affordable housing. In fact, the 523 units, there's a large percentage of studio apartments that will market value be sold for $500,000 or more. We've asked for design mitigations to this project, but the developer is not interested in anything that's going to cut into the bottom line. We've asked the city for protection by way of amendments, but we're told that our suggestions are not germane to MHA. So here we are. I believe MHA is well-intended, but flawed legislation in need of due process. Many people here tonight have expressed concerns about their neighborhoods in the future under MHA. I think downtown is a preview. My neighbors and I feel like canaries in the coal mines, struggling to breathe. The problem isn't density. It's how this program is being administered. It does have no controls. Developers may have the right to build 50-story towers without affordable housing, but that right should not come without responsibilities. Tower designs must be mitigated so all neighbors on a block can maintain access to daylight, privacy, and right-of-way like the alley. That's not happening voluntarily, and it won't without protections. Now that we're seeing how this plan plays out, it's time to make adjustments before it's too late. We need a density bill of rights to bring equity and accountability to project approval. This will let all parties know what they can expect. Raising funds for affordable housing is progressive.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Megan. Your time's up.
Existing stakeholders, they have to lose their rights, is not.
42A is Ryan, followed by 43B Lauren Swift, followed by 43A Keith Rickards.
My name is Ryan, and I live in A-Love, near Aurora. And as many of you know, Aurora Avenue is not a well-designed street. It's a street that's designed around the car, and its land uses affect this dying legacy. Nobody is building housing on Aurora. Much of it isn't walkable, and it's unsafe. Aurora isn't building business or economic opportunity either. Jobs have decreased by 15% in A-Love. Urban village residents are asked to accept the upzones because housing density improves our city. We ask for the same commitment from our urban village commercial lands. Aurora's current zoning doesn't encourage or require housing to be built. The rezone will correct that. Rather than allowing storage units, it will require housing units. And this is about housing people and not things. It's about creating opportunity in low-access areas. It's about building housing near transit. MHA labels this stretch of Aurora as a low access to opportunity, and I do not disagree. Aurora's blocks are deep, with frontage on safe, quiet neighborhood streets. The more housing there is there, the better it will be. Urban villages have carried 75% of Seattle's housing growth for the last 25 years. It's time for the rest of Seattle's neighborhoods to contribute. Upzone shouldn't be limited to just urban villages. All our neighborhoods should be contributing to more density. It's time other neighborhoods provided housing growth too. It's time housing growth occurred in and beyond our imaginary boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. 43B is Lauren Swift. I'm not seen, 43B. 43A is Keith Rickards, followed by 44B Suzanne Grant, followed by 44A Jody Biggs.
Hi. My name's Keith Rickards. I'm a long-term resident of the Greenwood neighborhood. I want to thank you all for being here and giving me the opportunity to bring a very small parcel, a collection of parcels, to your attention. They're currently zoned LR2RC. They're in the southwest corner of the Greenwood neighborhood. I have a Hala map here indicating the area of interest. It's my request that these properties not be upzoned for the height requirement, and I'd like to talk to you about my reasons why. The area is not in or adjacent to an urban village. You can see this on the Hala map that I've provided. Affordable housing units already exist along these, a couple of blocks, along Sixth Avenue Northwest. Upzoning these blocks will put significant development pressure on the existing houses. Redevelopment in the area has already created multimillion-dollar townhomes, and that's not really one of the goals for affordable housing. I have the illustration here of a single-family house that was torn down, and four townhouses were built on that property under the existing zoning. My little Photoshop trick here adds the new Hala height limit to this area. Upzoning this will have significant impact on the adjacent single-family homes in this area. I'm suggesting that this few properties not be upzoned for the height requirement and let development do what it may in this area. Thank you.
My microphone seemed like it went out for a minute. Okay, so we will now hear from 44B Suzanne Grant, followed by 44A Jody Biggs, followed by 45B Whitney Ririck.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Grant, and I oppose the proposed higher height limits on the top of Queen Anne Hill. This decision must be denied or delayed. I am disappointed that councilpersons Johnson and O'Brien do not respect us enough to be here. But Councilperson Bagshaw, I'm glad you're here. I have asked many times to talk with you, to no avail. We are trying to save a huge, exceptional tulip tree from the developers' saw. So far, you've not cared, but there may still be time. Regarding the new height limits proposal on the top of Queen Anne Hill now, they are wrong. The traffic there now is awful. Those of us who live there know enough to avoid driving there unless we have to, but sometimes we have to. Buying a gallon of milk and carrying it home, walking or busing, and then walking up a steep Queen Anne Hill is hard. I've done it, and it's not possible for everybody. You have not taken into account the adverse effects that raising the height limit at Safeway to 75 feet, seven stories, will have on traffic and livability. The fable that people don't want to or won't drive persists in spite of the evidence that they want to and do drive. Even car shares need roads to drive on and places to park. Roads on Queen Anne are not being scheduled to accommodate any more cars, nor are we scheduled to have a light rail station on the top of Queen Anne Hill. So why is the density being increased to the extent of 75 feet high at Safeway? Regarding the young people here tonight who are advocating against single-family homes, they may well change their minds when they want to raise a family, have a yard for their kids and pets, and then it'll be too late. We also need to save the trees that single-family homeowners protect. Where is the language in the upzone proposals that creates parks? Why aren't young people advocating for parks and trees? In conclusion, the MHA ruling and the raise in height limits must be delayed and turned over to councilmembers who are not running away like cowards, but who are willing to stay and live with the consequences of their votes. Nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move on to 44A Jody Biggs, followed by 45B Whitney Ririck, followed by 45A Philip Dugan.
Hi. I'm Jody Biggs. You've heard from a few of my neighbors, Chris Olson and Deborah Hanula, in North Capitol Hill. I'm here with them, speaking out specifically against Amendment 418.
Jody, can you get just a little closer to the mic or move it towards you? I know you're...
Is this one better?
The tall one is fine. There you go.
Even better.
Perfect.
The amendment proposed in 418, which would increase the height to 75 feet along Boylston and Eastlake, will directly reflect noise back to us. For context, the measurement of noise along my street, Harvard Avenue East, right immediately above I-5, is 72 decibels on average. To put that in context, in this room, I turned on the decibel meter on my phone, while we had some of our loudest applause, it reached 60 decibels. 72 is more than double that. Getting more noise reflected back can become actually a health issue. Exposure to 80 decibels for periods of eight hours or more can be known to cause significant damage to hearing. Our land use is to protect safety, protect general welfare. Another issue that I think hasn't been discussed around this, though, is our street is used by the entire community in North Capitol Hill and across Seattle, by families who want to come and watch the fireworks over Lake Union. But every day, I see cars that are stopped, "People get up, take photographs. This is a beautiful area." What the amendment 418 would do would be to take that away from the community and give it all to the people who could afford the penthouse apartments in these mid-rise towers that would be built across the street. So I strongly encourage that we keep Seattle beautiful for Seattleites and not for the few wealthy people who can afford those.
Thank you, Jody. So colleagues, we have about 48 people left. Assuming that everybody is here, that's about an hour and a half worth of public testimony left, at two minutes per person. So that would put us at about 10:30 PM. And so just want to again encourage folks who want to avail themselves of the public comment card to use that if they feel like they need to. And if you have friends in the audience who you want to team up with, then take five minutes. Please feel free to organize yourselves to do that now. Otherwise, we will be here until we get to the very last person, which is approximately 10:30 PM. So thank you, colleagues, for sticking it out with us. So next up is 45B Whitney Ririck, followed by 45A Philip Dugan, followed by 46B Bill Whitney? All right. It's two minutes left. Philip?
Hi. So my name is Philip Dugan, and I own a home in Pinehurst in District 5, near North Gate. I'm too tired and hungry to reference specific amendments, but I support maximizing the ability to build more housing in the area and throughout the rest of the city, especially with the coming light rail. I grew up on Queen Anne, surrounded by duplexes and apartment buildings in the neighborhood, throughout, next to homes that wouldn't be allowed anymore, and I thought they were great, and I support the changes there, too. I had friends who lived in those sort of housing, who wouldn't have been there if it wasn't for those options, and I wouldn't have grown up with them as friends. MHA isn't enough, but it's what we've got right now, and I think we should pass it without diluting it and then continue to do more. Personally, my father is going to have to sell my childhood home on Queen Anne and move soon so that he's able to retire. He needs that money to be able to retire. And so as he downsizes, I'm hoping he'll be able to stay close, and I would love to be able to build a detached ADU in my own yard so that he can age in place nearby. Currently, that is allowed, but I would also have been really excited by the idea of the block project and being able to host a home in my neighborhood. And currently, it looks like I can't do two DADUs even if I'm not doing an ADU. I would love to propose that. My lot is gigantic, 7,800 square feet. I could easily have both of those, but not currently allowed. But I'd love to be able to both help directly with the homeless problem and host my family intergenerational living and those sort of things. So thank you for your time. Please approve MHA and continue doing more. Thanks.
Thank you, Philip. Okay, 46B is Bill Sampson, followed by 46A Ralph Mayman, followed by 47B Royce Bixby. Nope. Is there a Bill Sampson in the house? Not seen one. We will move on. Are you Ralph?
Thank you. I'm Ralph Mayman. I'm here with a group of neighbors. We live on Harvard Avenue East, just above the Interstate 5 freeway. And we're here to, or I'm here, at least for my part, to discuss the issue of noise that would be created by an upzone in the area between Boylston and Eastlake in our neighborhood. My wife and I are Seattle natives. My mother was a Seattle native, as a matter of fact. Love this city. I'm not happy with what it's becoming because of the congestion and the traffic and the noise. It's not the city that I hope to raise my children. To give you a verbal description of where I live, we're on, right above the freeway, there's about a 60, 70-foot wall across the street from us down in Harvard, and then there are 10 lanes of freeway. There's four in each direction, plus the express lanes going down the middle. Across from us, on the west side of the freeway, is about a 25-foot noise wall, and beyond that and adjacent to it is Boylston Street, which is one of the areas that would be subject to the upzone. My wife and I lived in this neighborhood, or in this particular condominium, before the wall across the way was built. And though there was freeway noise, it wasn't intolerable. The building of that wall made things much worse for us. I can say that, for example, the sound of an airplane going by is sometimes drowned out by the sound of the freeway. So the city has a policy that was referred to earlier, and it's in the City Code 250801 O, the Declaration of Policy. It's the policy of this city to minimize the exposure of citizens to the physiological and psychological dangers of excessive noise, and to protect, promote, and preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. It is the express intent of the city council to control the level of noise in a manner which promotes commerce, the use, value, and enjoyment of property, sleep and repose, and the quality of the environment. The city also has published a chart that I'm sure you're familiar with of typical environmental noises, sound levels, and responses. At 80 decibels, that is the sound of highway traffic on Expressway at 25 meters. That is, just to put it in perspective, 70 decibels makes telephone use difficult. 60 decibels is considered intrusive, and 100 decibels is very loud. 60 decibels is considered intrusive, and 100 decibels is very loud. Now, we're probably at that 80-decibel level because of our proximity to the freeway. Adding the high rises, or mid-rises, if you will, is only going to add to that noise that we're experiencing now, and will make use of our decks that are in front of our condominium unusable. It will be totally unfavorable to sitting on the deck and enjoying, for example, the view and the fireworks. Boylston and below is a nice neighborhood. There are many single-family homes there. It is, well, Boylston has virtually no parking, except for a small part of it. The street below that, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the street below that, has parking on both sides, and there's really only room for one car to pass. If you have to pass another car going the opposite direction, you better find a driveway or something to pull over into. The adding high rise will only add to the congestion, the noise, the traffic situation in that neighborhood. And it's my belief that... Am I done?
Yep. That's five minutes. Thank you. 47B is Royce, followed by 47A, Steve Zemke, followed by 48B, Dave Foley.
Hello. Hello. I live in West Seattle, and I have a home on 32nd Avenue Southwest, which I think you might be familiar with, that little enclave there. Well, I think it should be upzoned, and I don't think that, well, the light rail station comes in right there. And in your amendment, you said that that should remain single-family, and that's where I looked.
RSL, residential small lot.
Oh, residential small lot, which is still low. And we live in a canyon. I think your relatives up on the uphill side, they have the, it's a little different up there, but down in where I live is kind of a canyon. And then leaving that low, I feel unprotected. And it would be better as high, or as mid-rise, which was the first, I think that went through in environmental, a lot of experts recommended that, but I don't think that it should remain low, just I have a family and a dog and stuff. So also, I kind of feel like some of the amendments maintain areas of affluence and white privilege structurally. And I would love to see West Seattle be more affordable and welcome diversity. And I think that the amendment doesn't allow for that as much. I think it's a, it would be a form of structural racism that I don't believe in. I'm a little low blood sugar right now. I don't know if you can tell, because I've been here late, but my family's eating pizza without me.
Without all of us.
But I care so much about this issue that I thought that I would stick around, and I really appreciate you listening and your representation on this issue.
Thank you, Royce. I hope you get to go have pizza with your family soon. Just, yeah, let me know where you're at. So I'm going to just invite myself to your family party. There are cookies, however, floating around in council chambers, thanks to Renee, right?
No. Thank you, Calvin.
Okay. Thanks to Calvin. So thanks to Calvin. He's got Cliff bars and other snacks. If your blood sugar is getting low, please build community in chambers and help each other out. Really quickly, before Mr. Zemke gives us his public testimony, I have been asked to give audience members a reminder that Seattle City Hall is one of our emergency shelters at nighttime in the city. And the shelter, you will be seeing a lot of activity at City Hall at 9:30 PM. So if you are exiting City Hall at 9:30 PM, we just ask for you to respect the privacy of those individuals who are experiencing homelessness, who are entering into City Hall for purposes of having a warm and safe night. So if you'd just be conscientious of your exit and your roaming about City Hall to respect those folks' ability to access the City Hall shelter, we would greatly appreciate that. All right. 47A is Steve Zemke, followed by 48B, Dave Foley, followed by 48A, Michael Robb.
Good evening. Thanks for staying and listening. We know that's part of your job. It's a difficult job because there are lots and lots of ideas and ways of looking at things. I want to note a couple random observations, having dealt with this issue for quite a while. 30 years ago, I was involved in the effort to try and pass the Growth Management Act in Washington State, set up the growth boundaries to also deal with the, obviously, urban village concept, et cetera. Obviously, things continue to change, and needs continue to change, but we're now dealing with the issue of affordable housing. But I'd just give a couple of quick observations, like who's going to be against affordable housing? So part of it's looking at that name and not getting stuck in the name alone, because it's the same as who's opposed to good government, who's opposed to healthy food. I think one of the things the city hasn't done is taken that forward-looking view and thinking, what is the optimal size the city actually should be? We can respond to outside pressures, inside pressures, et cetera, but what kind of a city do you ultimately want to be? I think that we need to look at that in terms of, are there limits to the growth of the city, and what are the changes that we experience as a consequence? So that's, for those of you that stay on the council, those of you that go off, it remains an issue that obviously is critical to the city. I think we can look at other places here in terms of what we're doing here. One comes to mind, saw recently, Oregon is proposing affordable housing being built across the state. They're looking at it being in the mall of family units being built, that comprises 25% of the building. We're looking, I think, minuscule at the issue. If the issue's affordable housing, why aren't we looking at, how do we do that? Not, I don't think it's just a question of increasing density. Density in and of itself isn't the answer to the kind of city that we want to be and being affordable. I support Lisa Herbold's anti-displacement amendment. I support also, obviously, dealing with, of course, the tree protections, et cetera. Those are issues we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. 48B is Dave Foley. Is Dave still here? No? Okay. 48A, Michael Robb. Michael Robb, 48A. 49B, Edward.
Lipkin.
Lipkin. Thank you.
Obviously, I'm not Edward. My name is Isabel Kerner, and I am representing myself as I am currently running to replace Sally Bagshaw in District 7 for 2019. So first and foremost, thank you very much for vacating. Second of all, I would just like to shine the light on this affordable housing issue, because it sounds a bit like propaganda to me. And I do believe that you, as a city, are basically short-selling every last bit of our public land to developers, giving them a massive tax credit, therefore raising the value of land in nearly every area that surrounds these new little, I don't know what you'd call them, cubicle buildings. Those burdens then get passed to the other homeowners or building owners, and are then passed down to renters via the increase in property taxes. Further, the other way you get your money is through sales tax. There's a huge cruise interest. I'm not really sure why you decided to close the battery tunnels, but chose to leave the Magnolia Bridge up, given it was a safety concern. And I'd also suggest that this is more of a homelessness problem than an affordable housing issue. So I would urge you to use the very last bit of the vacant land that we have left that the city still owns and is not short-sold to all of the developers, to use shipping containers, convert them into homes, and then sell them on the free market once the problem is solved. And I'd also like you to keep those tunnels open, because that is just the biggest waste of space I've ever seen. And if you don't have anything else to do with the viaduct, maybe you should just dump it into the ocean and retrograde it, just like you did with Denny Hill back in the late 1800s. Thank you.
You are Isabel Werner, is that what you said?
Isabel Kerner.
Kerner. And you were signed up as number 57. Is that correct?
Correct.
Originally?
You can cross me off that list.
All right. Next up is 49A, Toby Thaler, followed by 50B, Mark Foltz, followed by 52A, Tracy, Tracy Peltier. Toby.
I'm not opposed to infill density. It's how it's done that matters. Thus, displacement, whether or not you vote for the MHA, Councilmember Herbold's proposed ordinance will help mitigate the adverse impacts of displacement, of development, is an integral part of the MHA and thus should be considered at the same time as this bill. Displacement, the growth and equity analysis used in the EIS is inaccurate. Fremont was labeled a low displacement neighborhood, but Fremont has experienced the highest displacement of under 50% AMI households in the last 15 years. Many neighborhoods are like that, inaccurately characterized. Displacement, the independent City of Hearing Examiner ruled in the MHA CEPA appeal that economic displacement does not need to be addressed in an EIS. This is totally wrong. Displacement, in 2015, the city's Race and Social Justice Initiative team provided guidance to the Holoc Committee. A key recommendation was that homeownership needs to be encouraged and maintained, especially in communities at risk of displacement. The city failed to convene the RSJ review team until the draft EIS was done and published, but nevertheless, that team came out and said, "You blew it. It didn't cover race at all." So, nothing in the EIS about homeownership. It's going to accomplish exactly the opposite of what you plan. And on the environment, the Sierra Club people said it's for the environment, sort of future-wise. The weight of the peer-reviewed literature says that's not accurate. Urban agglomerations planet-wide do not get more efficient by growing. It doesn't work.
Thank you, Toby. 50B is Mark Foltz, followed by 52A, Tracy, followed by 51B, Lorne McConaughey.
My name is Mark Foltz. I'm a Wallingford homeowner. I was not paid to be here. I'm part of a group of folks called Welcoming Wallingford that believes that Wallingford would benefit from more neighbors of all kinds. After three-plus years of involvement in this process, it's clear that not everyone is comfortable with the idea of sharing our space with more neighbors, as if having new neighbors always means taking something away from everyone who's already here. But that's certainly not true in New York, Berlin, Lyon, Lisbon, other cities I've had the privilege of visiting, that are very livable and have room for lots of people, lots of families in all of their neighborhoods. Meanwhile, in Seattle, we can't stop people from coming, especially people with wealth. And this kind of zero-sum mentality has led to escalating rents, astronomical home prices, and the fact that many people in my life can't afford to live anywhere close to me. I don't believe MHA is really the solution to this problem, but it's a good step to legalize more housing, create guaranteed affordable homes. The downzoning amendments proposed in some districts would mean fewer new homes and fewer affordable homes. They just mean more people will be unable to live in Seattle in the future, and they should be rejected. In closing, a lot of people have talked about historic homes. I'd be sad if my 113-year-old house got replaced by new homes someday, but I'd rather have new homes than some mega mansion, which is what would happen today. Cities are made of people, not houses, and Seattle really needs room for more people. Please pass MHA as proposed by OPCD as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. 52A is Tracy. Is Tracy here? Okay. 51B is Lorne McConaughey. Lorne? Nope. 53A is Steve Rubstello. Okay, so 53A, Steve will be followed by 52B, Paul Chapman, followed by 53, excuse me, 54A, Ben Anderson.
Well, it's been a long four years, and you're still not listening. It's very, very interesting that this is being talked about as for affordable housing. Yet, you have real reluctance to demand that at least the housing that is lost is replaced. And this is supposed to be for having neighborhoods of diversity. And so we cannot force developers to put the affordable housing where you're building the new housing. We have to ghettoize, and this will make things better. No, I don't think it will make it better. This is about making development more profitable. If you're really concerned about affordable housing, then you wouldn't have to worry about the amount being larger than the displacement. It is, at this point, where most people look at it, say you're going to get more displacement. We have no shortage of housing for the wealthy in this city, none. Look at how many units are coming online right now. We have plenty of housing, but the housing is not affordable. That is the problem. As you go forward with this plan, you're going to have more and more of the affordable units are going to go down. And so we will build these new units, and from five years, we'll get part of it back under MHA. And it won't be probably till 20 years before we have affordable housing again in the city. We're making this city more and more unaffordable. Densification, in this case, is being used to push more and more people out of the city, and you're doing a fabulous job. If you want to have affordable housing, you have to look at that problem, and the developers are not going to finance it voluntarily.
52B is Paul Chapman, followed by 54A, Ben Anderson. Then we will hear from 53B, Steve Wilkins. Paul Chapman? Okay. Ben?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, councilmembers, for waiting us out, and thanks for everyone else who's sticking out here, if they feel strongly enough to express an opinion and can. So I'm Ben. I'm from Wallingford. I am here to speak in favor of MHA and against amendments reducing density, especially in neighborhoods like ours. I was able to take the 26th express bus straight here from a couple houses down from mine, down many, many blocks that will continue to be SF 5,000, which is kind of ridiculous. It's been more than four years since we declared an affordability emergency. I've had two kids in that time. By the time we do anything, they're going to be in elementary school, at least one of them. We've continued to add jobs at way faster than we've added housing for the people that are coming here, which means no matter what we do, someone's blocked out of town, regardless of the economic system. This delay and the lack of scope and imagination we've used means we really aren't treating this like the emergency we said it was, either through the speed we're addressing it or the magnitude of the changes we're making. But that said, please enact MHA fully as a first step and robustly as soon as possible, and continue to take bolder steps in the future to make sure we can accommodate the job growth we've been experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. 53B, Steve Wilkins. Steve Wilkins. 55A, Mike Richards, followed by 54B, Ethan Goodman, followed by 56A, Jim Sullivan. Mike? Mike Richards? No, Mike? Nope. Okay. Ethan Goodman? Jim Sullivan? Jim Sullivan. 56A, followed by 55B, Martin Lebovitz? Mr. Sullivan, please.
Evening. Getting past my bedtime.
Me too.
I'm one of the bastards that came from California in the 70s that Emmett Watson failed to keep out. But we have a homelessness emergency, and rents and home prices, as you know, are sky-high. In desperation, and evidently under the influence of those who will enjoy financial benefit, you've all indicated your intent to address these issues in part by changing the rules in single-family neighborhoods to eliminate off-street parking requirements, to allow absentee landlords to fill up my neighbors' lots with accessory and detached rental units, and allow absentee landlords to fill my neighbors' house and rental units with as many as 12 unrelated tenants. The absentee landlord, having just invested in two new rental units and a story addition on my neighbor's house, will be under significant debt obligation. And she will need to have 12 tenants to share the sky-high rent she has found she can charge. The 12 tenants will bring with them eight to 12 vehicles, which will occupy most of the available parking on my street. Lucky for me, I can keep my old beater in my basement garage. When two or three out-of-state investors or an investor consortium acquire several more houses in my neighborhood to park and grow their money and proceed to make similar improvements, I will look forward to my street forever congested with cars both parked and repeatedly circling, trying snag parking. Is this what you have in mind for us?
Thank you, Jim. The next person is 55B Martin. 55B Martin? Okay, oops. The next person I have on the list is 58A Colleen McCallor?
Macallair.
Macallair, I apologize. 57B is Garwin Long, and 59A is Rebecca Montellion. I'm good with the Spanish names.
Thank you so much for being here, it's Macallair. Couple things, I represent the Lowerhurst Community Club, and we do support the goals of MHA, and it's morphed and changed, and we've written over five different separate sets of comments, so I'm going to shorten it up in light of a couple of highlights. One of the big concerns we have is the fee-paid availability for developers to put the money into the pot. People will be displaced where they live, and that's a really important concept, especially as seniors or whatever, you have your doctors, your hairdressers, whatever, you walk to the bakery. So that might be an unintended consequence, and I would say the incentive for building onsite affordable housing should be far greater, and the penalty for building away should be a greater cost to help mitigate that. Also, single-family ownership, many of you do, and many people spoke tonight, that should not be considered a racist lifestyle, please. It should be actually an opportunity for people to play the drums loudly at their home with four walls, and they don't have to share with their neighbor, and also an opportunity to build wealth and accumulate and work a little hard and have something as a nest egg as they go through their lifestyles. Couple other things, historic resources. We support the amendments to retain the character of some of the older buildings, neighborhoods, and historic districts. The older buildings often have flexibility for a greater variety of lifestyles. And finally, we support all the green amendments. I'm going to read a quote from Richard Louve, who's going to inform us about why those 200,000 trees will matter. "The future belongs to the nature-smart families and the political leaders who develop a deeper understanding of the transformative power of nature and how it works, and who balance the virtual with the real. The more high-tech we become, the more nature we need." Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are down to, assuming everybody's here, that's, we have about 23 speakers left on the list. That's about 46 minutes worth of public comment, so coming in strong at that prediction of ending at 10:30 PM. So we will go ahead and continue. 57B is Garwin Long, followed by 59A Rebecca, followed by 58B Ping Feng.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Garwin Long and my wife Ping Feng. We are the owner of the Wagon Parcel of 15 years, identify as 3.16 on the MHA proposal amendment maps. I'm here to support the MHA and would like to thank you, the councilmembers and every member on Citywide MHA Agenda for the hard work that you have been doing. And however, I would like to point out that some land or area may require special attention for exchanging environment. For example, our lot is slated to be rezoned from single-family zone, single-family 5,000 to ISL. However, we believe a rezon to L2 is more appropriate from the standpoint of urban design as well as density and affordability. The reason, one, our corner parcel is adjacent to both multifamily and commercial zone. A low-rise destination offers better transition from single-family to commercial because it would avoid abrupt and sudden change atmosphere. Second, our land mostly sit on the bluff. A low-rise zone will be more conducive to lower the topography, eliminating the steep slope, and also it will contribute more gradual transition in terms of architecture, massing, deteriorating, and character. Third, a low-rise destination will allow higher density than ISL for the advantage within one and a half-block walking distance to the new NID Eastwood Chain Station. And last, the Wagon Parcel development will not display any household. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is 59A Rebecca. Rebecca Montellion? Not here. 58B Ping. And following Ping will be 60A John Coleo? Coelho. And then following 60A will be 59B Sylvia? I'm sorry, I can't make out all the letters in the last name, but it's 59B Ping.
Yeah, I think my husband just mentioned that. I just back-up him to mention a few points. I'm the owner of the banking land in South Seattle. We have owned that land for more than 15 years. I support HML because it's a viable city, it's growing, but I'm asking for more attention on the vacant land development in the MHA area because those vacant land developments will not cause displacement. It will also have less impact on the existing communities because they also will, instead, they will create more affordable neighborhoods, especially for the vacant land near the transportation, like Lireal Station. It can promote more utilization on the public transportation. With the upzone, it makes us more feasible and affordable to get those land developed. Otherwise, we are fighting for the blackberry in the land rather than the city grows. The blackberry grows much faster than the city, as I understand. So at last, I will thank you again for the, all the city councilor for all the work has done, and especially thank you for tonight. So late, everybody offered us this opportunity.
Thank you Ping. Okay, next up is 60A John, followed by 59B Sylvia, and then we will hear from 60B Charles Abel. John?
Yeah, my name's John Coelho, I live in East Fremont. Would like to, I would like to say that please do support 416, adopt the amendment. We are making some compromises on the plan, and we seem to have reached some kind of relative equanimity. However, I like to say that there are some serious defects in the whole thing, and that is, it's too slanted towards developers who throw thousands of dollars at electoral campaigns. And there is one way of supplying cheap housing, that's the accessory unit thing. And you could have, and it's considerably cheaper, as far as our neighborhood being a nest of racists, I'd like to point out that minority groups are leaving in droves because they can't help, they can't live there anymore. The taxes go up, so the rents go up. As far as you should set up a program that would help people that want to put accessory units in there, our accessory unit is incredibly cheaper than all the stuff that has come in. And I would say my most support is for genuinely low-cost housing, buying, using public land and turning it into low-cost housing. The whole issue of speckle of behavior, money laundering should not be written off as some demanded conspiracy theory. There's a whole article in The New Yorker about how Russian kleptocrats are investing massively in real estate in this country as a way of hiding ill-gotten gains. I would not write that off. But I think the primary thing is, how do you help people who are getting older, cannot afford these astronomical taxes, help them to put in an accessory unit?
Thank you, John. Thank you. 59B Sylvia? No Sylvia? 60B Charles? Hi.
Thank you all. I'm speaking today against the amendment to reduce upzoning to RSL, specifically within District 1-3, the area bounded by Genesee, Oregon, 41st and 37th. Since the fall of 2016, the very first proposed MHA zoning map the city released stated the best use for this area would be LR2. In all subsequent maps, as well as the preferred alternative, the city maintained this LR2 upzoning because the neighborhood is perfectly situated between the commercial and transit districts along both California and Alaskan Way, and it's one of the most logical places for substantially increased density in the entire district. Unfortunately, this amendment has nothing to do with affordable housing or what is best for the neighborhood. In Councilmember Herbold's own recent blog post, she acknowledged the intent of this amendment is to limit the amount sound transit would need to legally compensate homeowners in the event their properties are taken by eminent domain during the construction of the proposed light rail extension. The city knows they may need to acquire these properties, and this amendment intentionally limits the value before the taking. This is the equivalent of insider trading. And if that weren't bad enough, a light rail route has not even been selected. So this amendment effectively steers the train towards these homes by making them seem less valuable than the city's own MHA proposal acknowledges they really are. This amendment goes far beyond the purview of MHA and seeks to meddle with the transit process. If sound transit chooses to bulldoze a vibrant community with maximum growth potential, this is their right under eminent domain, but they should understand the true cost of that decision. Please respect years of analysis, community engagement, and government process. Pass the LR2 zoning as intended, allow the transit process to proceed fairly and separately. MHA is good for the city, but this portion of the amendment is arbitrary and capricious, legally dubious, and has no place in the legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. 61A is Linay Mahoney? Linay? Okay. 61B is Dendran Chamberlain? Dendran? 62A is Alexi Rodic? 62A? Are you 62A? Okay. 62B is David? Are you 62B?
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you for being here and serving Seattle. I'm sure the other three councilpersons are watching on TV as well. The decision you make in mid-March is going to impact Seattle for decades, so it's a very important decision. And Councilperson Begshaw from District 7, we will miss your dignity and your love for trees. So thank you for being here. My name is David Murring. My spouse and I live in a multifamily housing unit. We enjoy it, but we will forever miss the nine trees that used to be right on the lot next to us that were removed by a single development in 2017. We now look upon four three-story refrigerator boxes, I call them. I guess they're considered homes. But there'd be more of those type of homes and less of trees as we look into the MHA. There's three major flaws that I'd like to, it's not too late, there's three major flaws that I'd like the city council to consider with the MHA. One is, we can have both density and open space with our plans. Right now, the MHA doesn't do much with open space. Trees matter, habitats matter. Before you heard Mr. Michael Marsh talk about the Huron Habitat, and I'm going to leave a map of that. Right now, this area is being upzoned. It's outside of the urban village, but it's still along West Government Way, and there's increases in height right within that Huron Habitat. So my ask is that anything outside of an urban village, which is also being upzoned with the MHA, seriously look at those areas which also are within ECA buffers, such as this. Flaw number two is the MHA allows 20% to 30% increases. However, it doesn't require the same amount of increase for the number of dwellings. So they can just build bigger townhouses, bigger units. And number three, since I'm out of time, is that in new fees should be more than what they are.
Thank you, David. 63A is Mark Holland? Okay, Mark Holland will be followed by 63B Deborah? That's okay. Deborah Legosch? Okay, 63A?
Okay, well, everybody's kind of, I'm against MHA, and I want to just trash this whole thing, actually. My name is Mark Holland, I'm from Beacon Hill. I've lived there about 20 years. I'm also from the city of Chicago, where, believe me, they do planning much differently than the way you're doing it here. So I just want to generally address this. Density is not a moral value, but honesty is. Upzoning is not a moral act, but telling the truth is. And that's why I wanted to address the lie that underpins MHA. That lie is that 70% of Seattle is single-family housing. That's a lie. It's actually 35%. The truth is, parks, open spaces, green spaces, sidewalks, gutters, alleys are all zoned single-family, and that's where you're getting this number. And you need to stop telling this lie because it's ridiculous. All you need to do is look at a map. And why would they lie? For greed. Who's greed? Density Bolsheviks, that's who. Who are density Bolsheviks? Well, the density Bolsheviks are coming to town, and they're going to burn your single-family house to the ground. They'll plop a huge-ass building in its place where you're only going to get 65 square feet of space. Density Bolsheviks don't care what you think. They'll chop down the trees, man. They'll drive you to drink. Density Bolsheviks won't leave you alone till you're living in a box and chewing a bone. Density Bolsheviks wish for pie in the sky. Their dreams are too small, and their building's too high. Density Bolsheviks, please comprende? People like to live in houses, and that's the way it's going to stay. Thanks.
63B is Deborah? Deborah? Not you, Councilmember Juarez. It's Deborah with an H. Okay. 64A is Kirsten Glein? 64A? Okay, 64B is Winnie? All right. Oh my gosh, we have a warrior who was willing to stay until 2 AM. I'm not sure I would have been here with you, but I appreciate the spirit. 65A is?
I want to say hello to everybody. Hello, friends.
Hold on, give me just a second. 65A, let me, we don't have that many people left on the list, so let me do a quick little roll call here to figure out where we're at, and then we can get going here. 65A is Edward Kingsman, it looks like? Is there, 65A is still here? No? How about Joyce Farrell, 66A? Nope. Paulette Murphy, 65B? 66B Daniel Schwalbe? Okay, present. How about Susan Wand? How about Susan Wond or Ward, 72A? Okay. 73A Andrew Singh? No, 73A? 71B Glenn Bullman? 72B Nicholas Camacho? 73B Eve Keller? All right, so we've got one, two, three, four, we've got five, six folks to go, including Winnie. So Winnie, please.
Yes. Well, thank you, long enduring councilmembers and long enduring compatriots here. I'm Winnie Sperry is my name. I've lived on Capitol Hill for 49 years as a renter, a homeowner, a parent, a member of my community, a lucky person, a teacher, and so forth. And I've seen a lot happen with land use in this city. But anyway, let's hop along. As the evening has extended, I've reduced my words here. So the first thing I want to say is I support Councilmember Herbald's anti-displacement amendments. I support one-for-one replacement of affordable housing. Tear one down, put another affordable housing unit up. I support the clawback provision. And there's one more thing. Oh, let's downsize the university Ave. Let's do that. Okay. Now, I'd like to say this. I'm from the '60s. In the '60s, we practiced participatory democracy. And what I've seen with MHA and the grand bargain, the grand bargain is a flawed, false promise. It was put together essentially behind closed doors. Here's a very good story about how this happened. It's on the net. You can get it. It was from the Seattle Times, October 7, 2015. It was put together by a few people, ex-mayor Ed Murray, councilmember Mike O'Brien, and a go-to lawyer, very skilled, capable man named Jack McCullough.
Thank you, Winnie. Your time's up, unfortunately.
Who the developers love. Thank you very much. I stayed so long, I got to say so little. But I'm staying on to hear everybody else.
Two minutes goes by very quickly. I can appreciate that. 66B Daniel. And then Daniel will be followed by 71B Glenn Bullman. And then we will hear from 72A Susan Wond, and then 72B Nicholas Camacho.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Daniel Schwalbe. Thanks for all being here so late. Kind of disappointed to see the rest of your colleagues out in here, but clearly the ladies get stuff done, so. My name is Daniel Schwalbe, aka Dan the B ma'am. I am a resident of Crown Hill, District 6. I'm a homeowner and a proprietor of several small businesses, and I support Mike O'Brien's proposed amendments to the MHA, specifically I support the change to residential small lots in our area. I started my small business out of my 1940s two-bedroom, 720-square-foot bungalow, and I'm not the only one of my neighbors with a thriving small business in the community. I currently leave my neighborhood every day to commute all the way down to Ballard, where I'm leasing office space. It would be nice to have more room in my backyard to create something. Creating a dynamic business core is critical to an engaged and vibrant community. Focusing development on the main arterial achieves both density and opportunities for businesses. Over the 14 years, my partner Karen and I have lived in Crown Hill. We've watched several small businesses as they were displaced by development, and we are concerned about losing more of them. We don't want our neighborhood to become a place where people just come to sleep but go elsewhere for shopping and entertainment. Creating a community heart will offer great new opportunities for small businesses and even for bigger businesses. Councilmember O'Brien has participated in several neighborhood walks, which we appreciate coming out into the neighborhood. In order to better understand how to make this happen, he listened to the neighbors and the small business owners, and we believe that his amendments would help to achieve the goal of a vibrant, walkable community and business district in Crown Hill and the adjacent areas.
Thank you so much. 71B is Glenn, followed by 72A Susan Wond, followed by 72B Nicholas Camacho. Glenn?
Hi. I want to thank all the councilwomen for being here so late tonight, and I'm glad we have a majority here. Sorry to contribute to the pylon of middle-aged white men, but...
You just can't help it.
I know. Not much I can do about it. I'm a homeowner, a parent, two kids. I cannot afford the home I bought three years ago. I think MHA must be passed. Will it solve our problems? No. A lot of people raised issues that it won't solve, but don't let that mean don't pass it. It just means we've got to keep going, we've got to do more. I came here on the 62, which goes through the heart of Wallingford. I don't live there, but I think it's a great place to have more housing. My kids will never afford to live in this city. I have a 16-year-old son. There's no way unless we make some big changes. Will affordable housing be torn down with MHA? Yes, it will. It's being torn down now, though. It's being replaced with McMansions. I'd rather see some expensive condos than million-plus-dollar mansions. It's not perfect, but it's better than doing nothing. I'd also like to point out that I have a single-family home, but it's not what everyone's been talking about here as a single-family home. I hope you can keep in mind that families can live in things other than detached houses. I'm a parent with two kids. I live in a multifamily unit in the East Green Lake neighborhood, which is not single-family, but it's adjacent to single-family. I'm within walking distance of Roosevelt Light Rail Station, and we need to get rid of single-family zoning. It's racist in nature, and I'm tired of coming here and asking everyone to get rid of it.
72A is Susan, followed by 72B Nicholas.
Hello, I'm Susan Ward, actually.
Ward, I apologize. I kept saying Wond.
My bad handwriting. Everybody in our city applauds the goal of affordable housing. If affordable housing is also to me an affordable homes, it takes more than a box full of apartments to do that. To be a good home in a city, mobility is required, access to transit, grocery stores, to childcare, to parks and trees and children's playgrounds. Without these amenities, an unlivable area results, not a neighborhood. If you do not protect existing older affordable houses and apartments in neighborhoods, what replaces them also replaces the people who live in them. That housing is not being replaced by anything they can afford. If you do build something they can afford, but then fail to prioritize displaced residents, they may be permanently displaced. One idea for preserving affordable housing has been to create a low-cost loan fund for owners of affordable, older affordable housing. You could also consider adjustments to their property taxes in areas where taxes have shot up. If you allow developers to build only two-bedroom apartments as their family units, you eliminate families with children of more than one gender, or you force them to seek new housing as their children grow. If you eliminate or reduce building setbacks to squeeze in more units, you create canyons with no softening green spaces, with less privacy, and streets with less daylight. If you do not protect trees with a more stringent tree code, we will lose hundreds of trees in every part of town, trees which will take decades to begin to replace. Maintain protections for exceptional trees and for groves, mandate replacement of a ratio of greater than one to one, and prioritize native species and trees which will reach the same size. If you do not mandate that trees, parks, and playgrounds be part of every neighborhood to be upzoned, and that residents be within 10-minute walk of transit, childcare, parks, and grocery stores, you are simply creating ghettos. We want a city that is livable for everyone.
Thank you. 72B is Nicholas, and the last person signed up on the list is 73B Eve.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having this hearing. I'm here to speak in favor of the MHA proposal.
Do you want to use the other microphone? You can stand up straighter, and you'll feel better.
Thank you. Much better. I'm here to speak in favor of the mandatory housing affordability, because the simple fact is Seattle has been geographically constrained with water on both sides and a lot of steep hills in the middle, so there's no room to grow outward. We have to grow up. That's just basic topography. Over the last five years, median home prices have more than doubled, and the only way to tame this rapacious demand for housing within the city is to increase density and supply. With increased density, of course, you get extra benefits of people live closer to their homes, their schools, all the things that are important to them. And without mandating affordability, these buildings are going to come whether we like them or not. That's just a fact. That's basic economics. People want to live here, and people will build. By requiring developers to set aside this money and we build affordable housing, we make sure it's inclusive to everybody. And by upzoning, we get rid of the exclusivity of single-family zoning requirements. That's it.
Thank you so much. Last speaker signed up on my list is Eve Keller, 73B. Last, but certainly not least.
Maybe the best.
If you say so. You're just going to keep going with these puns.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for your time. My name is Eve Keller. I am president of the Mount Baker Hub Alliance, a volunteer group funded by the Only in Seattle grant. Thank you for that. The mission of our organization is to help create a vital town center focused around the Mount Baker Light Rail Station, to support our small businesses, and to enhance the safety and livability of this cross-road-rich, underutilized town center. Please support the District 2 amendment to bring a park to our town center. Next week, the Hub Alliance will be welcoming Mercy Housing, our new neighbor, to a meet-and-greet event for our local business owners to learn more about this organization. Wednesday, February 27, 3:00 to 5:00 PM. You're all invited. Here are your invitations. The families that will move into Mercy Housing's newest low-income housing development when it's finished being built in the next year need this park, as do the residents of the already-built art space low-income housing building in the Light Rail Plaza. The Hub Alliance will be partnering with Seattle Greenways, Friends of Mount Baker Town Center, and Mercy Housing, the first members of a growing coalition, to remind the city of Seattle to breathe life into a long-forgotten accessible Mount Baker project. We are activating, so please be prepared. The time is right, and we are ready. We already have a park designated to be in the accessible Mount Baker project. Let's make it happen this time. Please accept the amendment to the Mount Baker for District 2's Mount Baker Park Historic District. Let's hold this district together in its entirety, and please do not upzone that district. The beauty of an historic district is irreplaceable. Density is happening elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Okay, so Eve is the last person on my list. Is there anyone who is in the audience that didn't have an opportunity to sign up but is wanting to provide us with public testimony? Just, okay. No, all right, nobody's rushing towards the mic, so we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing on Council Bills 119443, 119444, and 119445. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to give another heartfelt thank you to not just all of you who came and provided us with public testimony and stuck it out until 9:55 PM. And for those who might be watching us on Seattle Channel, we still have quite a few people here, so thank you so much for being engaged in your city and coming to chat with us and share with us your perspective on this really important pieces of legislation. We may not all agree on the ultimate outcome, and I respect that and appreciate that, but I do also appreciate the opportunity to just listen to each other. Listening doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to agree 100%, but it does mean that we have made a good faith effort to listen to each other's concerns and try our best to accommodate those issues. I also want to give a special thank you to all of the councilmember offices, including my own, that helped staff us late into the evening, but a special thank you to Councilmember Rob Johnson's staff, who did a lot of the organizing and heavy lifting. They're all in the back. Really thank you all so much for making my job as the chair here this evening in place of Councilmember Johnson so much easier. We really appreciate all of your work and your dedication this evening. And lastly, just want to thank our clerk, who has also been with us all night. Thank you so much. And to our security at City Hall, thank you also for being with us. And again, one last reminder, please make sure that you are respectful on your way out of the building, as our shelter has been open now for about 30 minutes or so. So please be mindful on your way out. Thank you to my colleagues for sticking it out.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for your work.
Oh, well, thank you. My pleasure. Thank you all for being here. I know we all had a long day. And that being said, this concludes the February 21st Elect Committee on Citywide Minority Housing and Affordable Meeting. Our next committee meeting will be Monday, February 25. That's Monday, February 25, at 2:30 PM or at the conclusion of the regularly scheduled city council meeting here at City Hall in council chambers. Thank you for attending. We are adjourned.
Thank you.